Welcome to the September 28, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issues more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issues and citizens will be given three minutes to speak. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers will be given three minutes per item. However, citizens wishing to speak on more than three items shall be limited to a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the 6:30, August 24, 21, 2021 Regular City Council Meeting and the special meetings of September 7 and 15, 2021?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion passed. City Manager.
Yes, sir. We have one special presentation this evening. It's the last of our department overviews. And tonight's presentation will be the City Clerk's office. So with that, we'll roll our video.
The origins of the City Clerk's office is a story steeped in history and tradition. Regarded as one of the oldest incarnations of a public servant, the honorable role of City Clerk can be traced back to 3,000 B.C., where the role served as the reminder and keeper of the town's history and archives. Before the advent of writing, the clerk was a person who mentally retained the knowledge and history of its village and who served as a living public record for the townspeople. In the early Middle Ages, members of the clergy often served their towns and villages as trusted record keepers, administrators, and advisors, often interacting with citizens and serving their administrations on various matters. Fast forward through the centuries, and you will find that while technology may have changed, the role of this public servant has remained the same. With history as our backdrop, welcome to the Titusville City Clerk's office, the information source for Titusville citizens. While the primary role of the City Clerk is as a repository for the city's records and public information, the office and its dedicated employees also operates in a support capacity to other city departments. The City Clerk's office is made up of five full-time members, including City Clerk, Assistant City Clerk, Records Manager, Senior Administrative Assistant, and Clerical Assistant, as well as four part-time positions, including EDMs Records Manager, Administrative Assistant, and two Clerical Assistants, who assist citizens with questions and directs them to the appropriate departments quickly and efficiently. In addition, the office also provides mail courier services for the entire municipal organization. The City Clerk's duties relating to information and support are tied closely with their three distinct responsibilities as prescribed by code or Florida statutes: administering the legislative process, facilitating public participation in governmental processes, and acting as the official records custodian of the public record, or keepers of the community's history. First responsibility, administering the legislative process. To fulfill this responsibility, the City Clerk's office is charged with the following tasks: providing the public with notice of city council meetings, preparing city council meeting agendas at the discretion of the city manager, attending Community Redevelopment Agency and City Council meetings, keeping a journal of the proceedings, otherwise known as "meeting minutes", providing legal advertising and notification to the public on proposed ordinances, land use changes, and other items, attesting and fixing the city's official seal to certain legal instruments, and maintaining a book of all active ordinances adopted by city council that amend the city's code of ordinances and land development regulations. The Clerk's office makes these available on the city's website and through the codification vendor Municipal Code Corporation, or MUNICODE. The City Clerk's office currently submits new legislation to MUNICODE on a quarterly basis to incorporate into the city's codes. Notice of newly adopted ordinances is also posted in the same location on the city's website. Second responsibility, facilitating public participation in governmental processes. To comply with this responsibility, the City Clerk's office is charged with the following tasks: overseeing appointments of citizens to the city's various boards and commissions. These appointments are a great way for citizens to serve their community. Soliciting board applications. The office publishes statements once a month highlighting upcoming board and commission appointments and current vacancies. Staff posts this information on the city website, at City Hall, and on the city's government television channel. Serving as liaisons to the Student Advisory Council and the Titusville Community Service Award Committee. Facilitating public comment and participation at city council and Community Redevelopment Agency meetings in accordance with city rules and procedures. And serving as the municipal officer of city council elections, as well as transmitting the official certified election results to city council during election years. Third responsibility, acting as the state-recognized official records custodian of the city. As the official records custodian, the City Clerk is charged with protecting and managing the city's public records and those records entrusted to the office, both in electronic and paper formats. Managing the public record in accordance with Florida statutes and prescribed records retention schedules to include electronic image requirements, exempt information rules, legal destruction requirements, inventory keeping, storing inactive records, and more. Operating the city's records building across from City Hall comprising approximately 2,000 cubic feet of storage space. Inside this facility, historical, archived, and other paper records, including large maps and plans, are stored. These records are systematically organized and inventoried for fast and efficient retrieval. Organizing such a vast collection is quite an impressive feat, so much so that other municipalities have asked to visit and observe our system in order to implement one of their own. The City Clerk's office also responds to a large volume of public records requests from citizens and staff each year. Records managers periodically publish records management bulletins to assist all city staff in their own responsibilities to protect and manage the public records in the custody of their departments. Additionally, the office collaborates with city departments to provide new employees with training on state public records laws and the city's administrative policy on public records, as well as provide Laserfish access, setup, and user training. The office is also tasked with digitizing paper records, which is a high priority for the city. To accomplish this task, the city utilizes the electronic management database known as Laserfish to import or scan, retain, and manage electronic record images. This system currently houses millions of records, and that number grows by thousands each day. For many departments, using Laserfish to digitize their records eliminates the need for storing paper and provides instant fingertip access to much-needed information. Laserfish provides a robust engine to locate records in mere seconds, which would otherwise require hours of research to be found. The City Clerk's office is fortunate to employ staff that administer this database, creating user accounts, setting detailed security by user, department, folder, document, storage structure, and search criteria. Moreover, since information security is critical due to exempt or confidential information contained in certain records, the security features in Laserfish is so comprehensive, a user can be provided access to as little as one document amongst millions. Finally, since the City Clerk's office is usually the first stop for citizens seeking information or participating in local government, it is imperative the office and its employees keep a neutral position in all matters and maintain the utmost level of professionalism. To that end, the office strives to continually improve their processes in order to provide the highest level of service possible. Much like their predecessors, today's clerks perform a vital role, contributing to a smooth-running government and ensuring the story of the community is preserved for future generations.
That's outstanding. I realize I don't know all that these different departments do, so I'm glad we're, I honestly am. If I didn't know, I'm sure a lot of other people didn't know either. Uh, Member Jordan?
No.
Okay. Member Robinson? Okay, no problem. Uh, I'm sure we all want to say thank you to the City Clerk's office for all you do. And it was fun watching some of those people in the video who just didn't want to be there. Here, I'm handing you papers now. So anyway, thank you for that and thank you for what you do. City Manager.
Yes, sir. And Counsel, we are on Agenda Item 6A, which is the North Brevard Commission on Parks and Rec. Currently, there is one vacancy with an unexpired term to expire on August 31, 2023. There are currently two applications on file for your consideration, Mr. Robert Johnston and Ms. Corinne Oderman. They've both expressed their willingness and desire to serve on this commission.
Counsel or staffer, obviously not staff, Counsel, anything you want to say at this time? All right, with that, we will have, are both applicants here? I know one is.
Um, Stan is.
Okay. Stan, you want to talk about Parks and Rec? End it at the end. Let us pass it. Yeah, there you go. All right. Step up to the plate. Let's go.
This is a handout that's revised.
Start.
You can see the poster there. I'm very, my name is Stan Johnston. I want to start this, uh, because you got, and I'm especially happy to, to, to speak about parks because I've enjoyed parks like Parish Park, Sandpoint Park, Space View Park, and so forth. And unfortunately, as we know, in the last few months, we've had considerable amount of pollution and sewage spray. And I am a licensed professional engineer and my, my licensure says that, uh, I am licensed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people. And this is a subject matter that some members of council don't like me to talk about, nor does the City Manager. So I should, before you make a decision to put me on this board, which has to do with parks and has to do with the sewage spray and so forth, is that I should tell you about some buttons that I'm proposing to have prepared because that may influence what your decision is. So I have some buttons prepared. You see, these are round buttons. They can be oval. And one of them says, "Save Our Beach," "Save Our Beach Parish Park," and in the middle of it, it says, "Do Not Re-Elect Stockton, Stokel, Jordan, or Nelson, Titusville, Florida." Now, several of these buttons are the same thing. It's what they have in the, in the middle. So I'm, I'm asking you sometime later, you might want to contact me in a few days saying, "Hey, you know, Stan, I don't like this," or "It should be reworded," or something. Here's another one. It says, "Wipe Spray Cars and People for Four Months with Sewage." And in the middle, it says, has the same thing, "Do Not Elect," so forth. Here's another one. It says, "Four Months Secret Illegal Sewage Discharge to the Indian River," and it says, "Save Our River." Here's another one that says, "Save Our Beach, Pave Paradise, Put Up a Parking Lot." Uh, "Save Our Beach Parish Park," and in the, in the middle, of course, it says, "Don't Re-Elect." Here's another one. It says, instead of spraying, saying, "Spray sewage, don't spray sewage," it says, "Spray Cars and People with Urine, Feces, Bloodborne Pathogens," and so forth. And it says, uh, you know, "Do Not Elect," so forth. And then another one, uh, obviously, it's probably somebody don't like, won't like this. It says, "Don't Spray Cars and People with piss, poop, and bloodborne pathogens." So I needed to let you know because this is something that our parks shouldn't have had to suffer. In other words, having the, uh, this spraying sewage and as, if you choose me.
Thank you. Time is up.
I'm asking for more time.
I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I recall, is Ms. Oderman here? Okay, she spoke last week, and I don't think I have to go very far back to remember what she said and the enthusiasm with which she said it. Counsel, oh, Member Jordan?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I move that we approve Ms. Corinne Oderman to the North Brevard Commission on Parks and Recs for an unexpired term to expire on August 31, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion from, uh, Member Jordan, and I have a second from, where'd that come from? You, Vice Mayor? Uh, anybody else? I have some lights here. Nope. Okay. Uh, roll call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes. Appointment approved. City Manager.
On to Item 6B, which is the Community Redevelopment Agency. The term of Member-at-Large Jim Ball expires on September 30, 2021. Member Ball has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for a four-year term to expire on September 30, 2025. He's the only applicant available.
Member Ball, anything you'd like to say? Come on up.
Is this live? All right, yes, it is. So Jim Ball, 921 Indian River Avenue.
Here we are.
Yes, the mic. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, my colleagues on CRA. Uh, I would be most delighted to serve another four years at my age. It's not always an easy decision.
Go there.
But, uh, I'm, I'm more than willing to re-up. Uh, I think the, the end of that City Clerk video was very appropriate. I think most of you know that we're about to get something over 2,000 new employees at the world's largest satellite manufacturing facility directly across the river. And I sincerely hope that many of them will decide to live in, in Titusville and perhaps even in downtown, which would be very convenient to where they're going to be working. So I look forward, if you are so inclined to reappoint me, to serving another four years with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ball. Uh, we are, I will speak for myself. We would, we would miss you. You are pretty important. You, uh, you're, you're very knowledgeable. You're very dedicated. You're very committed. And, um, Titusville is, is who you are. So I very much appreciate, the guy should spend a lifelong service for you. You could write a book on all the different positions you've held, including up here on council. So with that, I, I wrote on my notes, I always write, you know, I wrote "easy" on this one. This is easy to me. So Counsel, uh, remember, Member Jordan?
Mayor, we have one card.
Okay.
Um, Stan Johnston.
Okay, there you go. Come on up. Stan?
Stan Johnston, I'm here to also to support Mr. Ball. Uh, he's been here, and as you, as some of you know, is that he's also been a council member. He's been here for, I think, 35 years, something like that. And I've been here about 50 years. Um, the, uh, this particular issue in the CRA involves some very serious issues that, that have happened here that are a big deal. It has to do with their City Manager, or City Attorney and Counsel. And that's why I'm using this handout. Uh, this handout, uh, I want to share with you, it has several items that, uh, I noted on, on one of these. Let's see. Well, I don't have it with me, but here's what it is. Let me tell you which ones it is. It's, it's number one, uh, and, uh, number, number two, uh, number three. Those first three items in, in that handout has to do with that. Number three has to do with the consent order. And I'll read this to you because this, this very much applies to the CRA. Uh, and also especially our, our attorney and so forth. It says, it says, um, uh, official approval by FDEP, that's the big guys, in August 27th, uh, 2021 of the false FDEP city slash city consent order, misrepresenting sewage discharge into the river as ending on December the 19th. Well, it didn't end on December the 19th, and we got all kinds of photos here and so forth. It just continued, and it was even in April, not just from my account, but other people. Um, and we have all kinds of witnesses. And falsely denying the illegal secret discharge of millions of gallons of raw sewage into the Indian River from December 19th and ending in April 27th. So in other words, the consent order that was approved by our City Manager and our City Attorney, which, which gave to you, and also, of course, Sean Stauffer, was completely dishonest and false. And it continues today. And of course, in, in this case, it talks about even the Florida Today. The Florida Today won't report it. Uh, as I talked to a journalist, he said, "Well, I can't report, uh, things what you're talking about. I can't report the truth because why? Because he'd lose his job." If he, if he reported the truth about the city, the city would no longer give him any more information, so he'd lose his job. So we have a situation that, uh, here in, um, Titusville and in Brevard County, where we have dishonesty rules by authority. Hail, hail Hitler. Not Hitler, but anyhow, I want you to understand is, is that what, what's going on is, is dishonesty and what CRA has to deal with. So, um, I don't think I have more time. I would like to have more time to share with you some of these other ones. For, for example, uh, the, um,
Thank you very much.
Oh, I guess I'm not going to get it.
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I believe we were ready to vote. We had a motion and a second.
No, we haven't.
Okay, that's right. Member Jordan, go ahead.
All right, Mr. Mayor, and Counsel, I move that we approve Mr. Jim Ball to be a Member-at-Large for the Community Redevelopment Agency, a four-year period, for a term to expire on September 30, 2025.
I have a motion from Member Jordan.
Second.
And I have a second from Vice Mayor Nelson. Member Stokel, I saw your light, but you, okay, very good. All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yep.
Yeah, the reappointment is unanimous, and we thank you very much for being willing to continue on. Thank you for all you add to our city. City Manager.
As you were voting, I just wanted to note that Member Ball did sigh when that 2025 was mentioned. Onto, um, Item 6C, which is the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Currently, there's one vacancy for an alternate member with an unexpired term to expire on July 31, 2023. One application is currently on file for consideration. It's Jonathan Van Zyl DeYoung. Mr. DeYoung has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board with an unexpired term of July 31, 2023. There currently are no other applications on file for your consideration.
Is John here? Come on up. Even if you don't say a lot, we'd like to have you come up. I know you didn't want to come up last time. And I can't say your last name, so I'll just continue to say Mr. John. Clearly, I appreciate the fact that you were willing to step in and find a way to get involved and help, and, and this is what you're doing because we had you up here earlier. And, um, again, you know, your "I will" is more important than anything else. So I appreciate that. Anything you want to say for us?
Well, I, I think I said a lot last time, and, uh, as I was reading the agenda for tomorrow's meeting of this board, I was noticing that a lot of what they do is something similar to what I've done with QA. It's really understanding what the rules and regulations are and determining if the actions fit that. And I think I could do a pretty darn good job.
And again, I think you will as well. Uh, City Manager, this is for the alternate spot because it's not quite the fit. Okay? Uh, and you're good with that?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate you. All right, so, um, obviously, we're making a motion for the alternate position on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Member Robinson?
Um, I'm waiting on you.
I will appoint, I move to appoint Mr. John.
Thank you.
To the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for an unexpired term to expire on July 31, 2023. Take my glasses.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Jordan. Roll call vote. Oh, stop, timeout. And, uh, any cards on this?
No cards.
Okay, thank you. Go forward.
And just to clarify, it's for the alternate position.
Alternate position.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Appointed unanimously. Thank you very much. City Manager.
On to Item 6D, which is the North Brevard County Hospital District Board. The North Brevard Co-County Hospital District Board Semiannual Report will be presented by Mr. Herman Cole, United States Air Force Retired.
Good evening, Mayor Diesel and members of City Council. I am Herman Cole, immediate past Chair and Member-at-Large of the Parish Medical Center Board of Directors. It is always an honor to come before you guys and, and give you our semiannual report. A written report has been provided to you that summarizes the activities and outcomes achieved by PMC since our last report. Since our last report to you, much has happened with regard to the COVID pandemic. Soon after the Fourth of July holiday weekend, the Delta variant impacted our community with a vengeance. The surge of critically ill patients of COVID continues to place an unprecedented strain on the county's entire healthcare system, from our first responders to the hospital. The summary of our, we were supposed to have a screen up here, and if you look at the screen, and you're going to see me up there, it shows the number of hospitalizations that we have had since July, and that number is about, is, is 297 COVID patients since then. Prior to the Fourth of July, the number of COVID-positive patients were in the single digits. Parish leadership were in fact planning a celebration because we had reached, we were going to reach zero. Obviously, that didn't happen. But the highly But the highly contagious and deadly Delta variant had other plans for us. By the end of July 2nd, two weeks after the holiday, the numbers of COVID patients completely skyrocketed. Numbers ranged anywhere from 60 to 70 COVID patients per day. This was, was a common occurrence. Sadly, in August, we were mourn, we mourned the deaths of 53, 53 of our citizens, ranging in age from the 20s to 80s and 90s. As expected, some two weeks after Labor Day weekend, COVID hospitalizations are again on the rise. While Parish remains focused on providing the best possible care to all hospitalized patients, we have also had to focus on preventing the spread of this unyielding COVID-19 virus. Since February, Parish has partnered with Brevard County Health Department to make testing and vaccination available to the citizens of North Brevard. When area businesses such as The Great Outdoors and Rush Construction had exposures and needed help to get their employees tested and vaccinated, Parish was there. Parish has provided free community COVID testing in Brevard since April 2020. From April 2020 to August 2021, PMC has collected nearly 7,000 COVID-19 tests. Parish also answered the call to provide vaccinations to the port so they can resume business and their cruising operations. From February to August, Parish's team has administered more than 16,000 doses of vaccination. This month, the testing and vaccination operations have been transitioned to the county's authorized vendor, Nomi Health. This provides the stressed-out and stretched Parish team some needed relief. The county will continue to operate the North Brevard drive-through vaccination and testing on our site at Parish property. In addition to testing and vaccination, Parish was also among the first in the area to provide the monoclonal antibody treatment, also known as MAB. Parish's MAB clinic opened this past February. We've done 130 treatments since then. The county is also providing information about Parish's MAB lab to those who test positive at the North Brevard COVID testing site. Lastly, consistent with Parish's commitment to healing patients, healing families, and healing communities, Parish has continued to recruit new providers to our community. We have provided some 31 new providers of various disciplines to our community within the past few months. In conclusion, I'll end this report with Parish Healthcare wants to extend its appreciation to the Florida Department of Health in Brevard County, Health First, Stuart Healthcare, the City of Titusville's First Responders, Brevard County Fire Rescue, and all of the healthcare heroes for their extraordinary work they're doing to care for our community during this pandemic. Stay safe, stay healthy, and stay strong. This concludes my report, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have at this time. And just to add an editorial comment, Councilman Jordan asked me not to do that, because he knew I will. But as an integral part of Parish Medical Center, but not being in the medical profession, I see what these people at the hospital go through every day. And to have gone through what they have gone through for the past year and a half, it's remarkable that we're still surviving there. And I, you know, my, my heart and everything goes out to them for the work that they have done in the, in our community, to help our community to stay healthy.
Well, thank you. I think you would have been remiss if you didn't say that. Gosh, when we thought we were in the middle of the game, and maybe the game coming to an end, we get a proclamation out thanking all of you and all the workers and the nurses and, you know, and you guys know more than I that it's not just the nurses, and it's doctors and everybody.
Yeah.
And then the game kept going.
Yeah.
And then just, and when I gave my words, I honestly had a conference call with Parish, I'll go in that direction, Mr. McCarterian, and was informed about how bad things were. I had no idea. I mean, the game's over. We got this thing going.
We're in overtime.
And we went into overtime. That's exactly what the wording I used. And at that time, I used that moment to encourage vaccinations and where need be, masks. I don't want to get into the politics of all that. It just drives me nuts that there's anything political about that. However, there is. But what I really want to say, and I think I said that night, there's no proclamation that can give the thanks and the appreciation to Parish and the staff and the leadership and be adequate. You know, the, my mom used to tell me all the time, the strongest steel goes through the hottest fires. And you guys are some strong steel, because you've been through one heck of a hot fire. Vice Mayor.
I just wanted to add my thanks. I've talked to several of the people who work out there, and it was rough, and I hope our community understands how rough it was and appreciates you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Member Robinson.
Yes, also, I want to thank the Board, the staff. I've worked on occasion in helping, working side by side with Parish to get their vaccination going in our community. And I also have a personal experience with that. My wife is traveling the United States to help carry on and keep people safe. And I know what, what it takes to be dedicated to do that, and my wholehearted thanks and support. Job well done.
Anybody else want anything? City manager, would you like to add anything? Nope? Well, with that, I'm not going to let you guys get out of here without me giving you some applause.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Tougher times than I think most of us knew. Okay, city manager.
Onto item seven, which is petitions and requests from the public present non-agenda items.
Petitions and requests. I see none. That's not going to happen.
Oh, golly.
How you doing, Stan?
I'm doing wonderful. Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue. I'm here as a professional engineer here to complain about some things, and I've got some photos. And you've got copies of the photos, so here are the photos. And what I've been saying to you, some of you heard, is that by golly, it's the same thing. For example, in this photo, it shows, it shows the fountain, this is, this is done in, this photo was done in January, and it shows the fountain running, and it's, it's got signs and so forth around there saying that the water may have been contaminated, but we know it's contaminated. This is at Sandpoint Park. And so I've got signs. The signs are on my car. The signs are on my car because the city would remove my signs. So I have to put them on the car, and one of the signs is, of course, is a warning sign, with skull and crossbones saying, hey, you know, this is not maybe contaminated, it is contaminated. I mean, we've got all kinds of tests, the city has all kinds of tests. It's hazardous. And also, the sign says, hey, you know, by the way, is this water is going to the river still? And all of that is, right here's a photo of it going to the river after December the 19th. So in other words, what I was telling everybody here about the consent order, right here's a picture of it after December 19th. It's like a river, a river that's going to the Indian River. Sewage. We're talking about piss, poop, all kinds of, salmonella, whatever you got, whatever you got. So, so here's a picture of it, and it says on this picture, it says massive sewage flow into US 1 Culvert and then into the Indian River Lagoon, that's going to the Space View Park, not reported by FDEP, not reported by city. Of course, it's denied in our consent order with FDEP, and not reported by the Florida Today, even though the Florida Today has all these photos. They won't report it. So we've got a big problem here as far as, and over here, you see, is a picture of a car that has sewage on it. And this was, well, because the wind would blow. The wind would blow and put sewage on cars. So by golly, I took this car over to, to Garden Street office, and by, and what they did is they called the police, I mean, and said, get out of here. So they sent me a warrant. So anyhow, this is a sign here that says sewage spray, and on this, on this sign, it says diarrhea, vomiting, headache, nausea, and so forth. This was, this was reported January the 12th, but it continued. This is not what I reported, this is what other people reported. So it's not just me. So the City of Titusville needs to do something about this, because it's very dishonest, this consent order, and what has happened and what's not in the newspaper. So it's, it's a matter of closed doors, gag orders, and I've got a number of things.
Thank you very much.
I'd like more time to speak about this.
I see none, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. City manager, the consent agenda.
Onto consent. Council members, do you have any questions of staff before we do consent? Any council members want to pull any agenda items? Clerk, are there any cards?
One individual has signed up on eight items.
Okay. And mayor and council, with your permission, I'll read the titles for the record.
Thank you, sir.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the award of CCTV sanitary sewer camera purchase. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the completion of lease acquisition of two street sweepers. Consent agenda item 8C, authorize the award of primary and secondary contracts for laboratory analysis contracts. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the piggyback contract with the state of Florida for Avis rental car contract for the Titusville Police Department. Consent agenda item 8B, approve resolution 352021 approving the temporary road closure of state roads for special events in the downtown street party and monster walk. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the contract for the purchase of SCADA towers for the master pump station and raw water transfer stations. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the purchase of a six-inch pump and trailer. Consent agenda item 8H, approve the contract for the South Street Elevated Water Storage Tank Demolition to Millburn Southeast LLC. And consent agenda 8I, approve change order number three to the contract CN20B044 with Wharton Smith Incorporated for bypass valves.
Thank you. Council, any of you to add or ask? Okay. Move to cards.
Stan Johnston.
This is unpleasant, so maybe it's time to take a potty break. Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, and I'm here to share with you about these items. So I'll go over them real quickly. So pay attention. 8A, I'm neutral on that. 8C, approval. 8E, approve. 8F, neutral. 8G, neutral or neither. 8H, neither. And 8I, neither also. So those are the, what I'm talking about. For example, however, even though I've, I've talked about like 8A as being neutral and 8C as being approved, these have something very similar in common, and some others have something in common. They're coming from water resources. And water resources is, has to do with, with how they spend their money. So this is what we're having. I mean, it's both sides, both sides of this, this poster. I mean, not only sewage, sewage spray on people, but we also have sewage running into the river that's, that's being dishonest about in their, in their consent order, and also dishonest as far as about what's been reported by the Florida Today. So, so for example, item 8A, which I'm neutral on, it's a spending of $60,000, $63,000. Well, gee, how much does it cost to turn off the fountains at Sandpoint Park and Space View Park? How much could it possibly cost? Here we're spending $63,000 on a, replacing a camera. Not only that, is that, is that we used, we used in the cleanup of this mess, of this, in other words, the urine, the feces, and the salmonella, and the hepatitis B and so forth like that, and all these bloodborne pathogens in the cleanup of that, we used employees that weren't vaccinated. We used employees that weren't, that weren't trained. So why don't we spend money on giving these people vaccinations and training them to work in sewage? I don't understand it. I mean, and it also, in the, let me read something to you also. Laboratory analysis, 8C, laboratory analysis contracts. So here's what you have in your agenda pocket. Let me read this to you. It says, certain laboratory analysis required for the Water Resources Department are beyond the scope of accreditation of Laboratory Services Division and must be contracted out to a commercial laboratory. What is that saying? I want you to understand is during this, what you want to call it, crisis, anti-crisis, whatever it was, and when the sewage is going into the river, I called repeatedly for laboratory services. I got some people's names of lab assistants and so forth, laboratory, I even, I even tried to talk to people who were in the laboratory as they came to get samples and so forth, and they would walk away from me, they would drive their vehicle away from me, they wouldn't talk with me. And then when I also called on the phone, they wouldn't return my phone calls, they wouldn't talk to me because they have gag orders. So this is likely connected to what happened there, is in other words, that we're, we're choosing Flowers Laboratory and another laboratory to do our testing because, what does it say? It says beyond the scope of accreditation. So it appears, I think I would like to know, I think Mr. Stoffer, who's here, should tell us what samples were we doing that were reporting to FDP and the public and so forth like that? What were these samples that we're doing, that we're doing that we did not even have accreditation to do? What is this about? I think that our council should ask that question. This is a big deal. I mean, we're talking about serious stuff. In other words, when I talk about salmonella, I talk about people who died of that stuff. In other words, when we got raw sewage, we have bloodborne pathogens, and we have hepatitis B, and we have all kinds of diseases, and people going, that puke in their, in their toilets, they put garbage in it and so forth like that. And then what do we do? We spray it. We spray it on cars and people, and also, people were having picnics there. It went on their food. So we may not know for years what in the world damages has happened. But what we're going to do is we're going to just act as nothing happened. So that's what's going on, and I resent it, and I think that all this money that you're spending on these, for example, let's go to another one. 8F, contracted purchase, Scotta tires, whatever that is, master pump station and so forth, that's a big one. And so I'm commenting about that, that's throwing money, and then we have a purchase of a six-inch pump with trailer from the sheriff's department, and they got a letter hit on there that has a sheriff symbol on it, on this private enterprise. How in the world they do that? I don't know. But so, and then let's go to 8H, award of contract for the South Street Elevated Water Tower. So there's $168,000. Why couldn't we spend $168,000 on getting our, our employees vaccinated? By the way, I'm, I'm registered again, I told you, for the health sake. By the way, I'm, I'm registered again, I told you, for the health, safety, and welfare of the public. Forty years ago, when I was known that I was going to work in sewage, what I did is I went and got my hepatitis B shot. I paid for it. Because that's what was required. Now, what is required today by OSHA? I don't know. But I think you violated repeatedly OSHA laws when you have employees working in piss, poop, and all this other stuff and not vaccinated. But nobody says anything, certainly not our city manager, certainly not our city attorney, and no council member will talk about it. I think this is serious, and when you spend your money right now is we're throwing money away. And I've given you examples in this handout here about some money, this been millions of dollars that the city is wasting, just throwing it away. So, let's go on to another one. Yeah, that, these, these expenses are, they should, should be taken care of.
You haven't gotten to I yet.
Pardon?
I.
Oh, I, well, I, I, I'm set up. It's neither on that. And that's $63,000 for that, and that appears to be another expense is why don't we just go ahead and spend some money on being able to turn the valves off? Because, in other words, when I called the Department of Health and I called the governor's office, and I called Attorney General, State Attorney's Office, even I made a police report with the Titusville Police Department, everybody said, it's either, you got either, it's going to have, who is going to turn it off? It's going to have to be the city of Titusville, also caught in Bevard County Parks. They can't do anything about it. It's these guys right here, Mr. Stauffer over there, Mr. Larisse. And of course, I've also contacted them. So, they all had pictures of this stuff before, and they did nothing about it, absolutely nothing. FDEP, Governor's Office contacted me, that contacted FD, FDEP, and they did nothing. They wouldn't respond to my calls. They wouldn't respond to my emails. They didn't respond to the pictures that I, that were sent. Maybe they responded to some other people, not to me. So, it's not just me who's making this complaint. There's a number of people that do not want to be known, that do not want me to tell their names because they know what happens, the backlash that comes from the city. If you have, if you have someone who is a friend, who is an employee or something like that, it might say, hey, you know, maybe they squealed. So, what we have is a bunch of gag orders right now. For example, the employees got gag orders on them. They won't talk to me. They know not what to talk about. They got, they called the police on me if they, if I asked them questions. That's what's happened repeatedly. I asked questions, and I have had the police calling me repeatedly, not just at the Garden Street office, because they don't want to, they don't want to hear what I, questions I have to ask.
Thank you.
I'm asking for more time.
I see none.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have, yes, I do. Member Jordan.
Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve consent agenda items 8A through 8I.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan, a second from Vice Mayor Nelson. Roll call, vote.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Jordan.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson.
Yes.
Consent agenda passes unanimously. City manager.
We have no ordinance first readings, no old business. We're now on to, correction. Got ahead of myself there. We're on item 9A, which is the second reading for the tree protection ordinance. The city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 202021, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the land development regulations to provide for standards of tree protection, including the designation of protected trees, creation of total canopy and preserved canopy requirements, standards for removal of heritage trees, establishment of incentives to preserve trees and reduce mitigation, and amending critical root zone, tree survey, and buffer yard requirements by amending chapter 30 development standards, specifically amending sections 30-31 intent, 30-32 criteria for removal, 30-33 relocation or replacement of trees, 30-34 mitigation plan, 30-35 exceptions, 30-39 tree removal, permit required, 30-40 tree survey required before permit, 30-324 landscape, 30-334 reduction in required landscape yards, and 30-338 natural buffer yards, and creating new section 30-31.5 canopy requirements, providing for grandfather provision, severability, refill conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
This item was tabled at the regular city council meeting on August 24, 2021 at 6:30. The Titusville Environmental Commission and the Planning and Zoning Commission have recommended the tree protection ordinances, which are included as part of this agenda item. At the regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on August 18, 2021, a motion was made to recommend to the city council that the planning and zoning recommended the planning and zoning version of the tree protection ordinance. And if PNZ's version was not approved by city council, PNZ recommended approving the staff version that's being presented to city council. The motion was approved 5-1 with the one no vote being Member Rice. Based on citizens' requests, the city began a process in 2019 to review and consider amendments to the current tree protection requirements of the code. During the last two years, council and staff have received input from members of the public and advisory boards in the development of various ordinances. Significant efforts have been made by both planning and zoning and the Titusville Environmental Commission in working with the public to develop their recommendations, which are attached. The ordinance proposed by staff contains significant changes to the code, a comparison of existing code, and proposed changes are attached. Ms. Busaka will begin her presentation with a presentation, which will show you some of the comparisons. Ms. Busaka.
Good evening. Before we get started, although Mr. Larisse did mention the significant efforts by many groups, I want to again acknowledge and thank the PNZ, the TEC, citizens, the staff, and the council for their assistance in getting us this far this evening. I just want to go briefly. You've seen this slide before. What's the current approach? We have preservation and residential subdivisions only for landscaping. We require mitigation, and we require landscaping for, mitigation for removal of trees, and landscaping is required for all developments. The current code talks about the trees in excess of 20 inches diameter at breast height, which is DBH. There, if that's removed, there isn't two-to-one mitigation. In August, the ordinance that was presented to you showed canopy requirements for all developments. Protected trees were changed from the current 20 inches to 14 inches. And along with the canopy requirements, there was also reduced mitigation for all trees except heritage trees, which are currently defined as 46-inch DBH and above. Also, currently, if you have other areas on your site which are required to be maintained or preserved, such as forested wetlands, those cannot count toward your landscaping requirements. So, when canopy was put in, the requirement was modified to allow forested wetlands to count toward your canopy, as well as other forested preservation areas. In addition to that, there was a discussion two years ago about why can't we get incentives? Incentives have been put in, were put into the August ordinance. In addition to that, protected trees included all native Florida-friendly trees, and burning on-site was prohibited in that ordinance. After the discussion on August the 24th, the staff, taking direction from council, modified the ordinance to do the following, to require canopy only for single-family subdivisions and for all other types of development, that would be multifamily, any single family not in a subdivision, commercial and industrial, the canopy would be optional. Now, it, the September ordinance also clear, currently has a mitigation for 14- to 20-inch DBH trees. So, those, that standard, although it is one inch required planting for every two inches that were removed, is different than the current standard, which has no mitigation for trees between 14 and 20 inches. In addition to that, the planted canopy was shown to equal 25 percent, I'm sorry, 50 percent of the canopy at maturity. The previous August ordinance did not clarify exactly how those planted trees were to be counted. In addition to that, the council said, we like, they liked some suggestions from various people. One of those included a 75 percent, if there were 75 percent preservation of heritage trees on-site, that would eliminate the review to remove heritage trees by the Development Review Committee. In addition to that, burning on-site should be permitted, council said, so that's in that ordinance. And there were additional incentive, enhancements to the canopy that had been shown in the August. What didn't change? Well, what didn't change was the removal of heritage trees would still be decided by the Development Review Committee with appeal to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Council wanted additional flexibility for preservation of trees, such as the staff's ability to administratively reduce setbacks or buffers that continues. And rather than requiring a tree survey for every inch of property, this would allow sampling for tree surveys. That's currently being done by the county, and I believe that it has been very successful. If the staff doesn't feel that the sampling is adequate, we have the right to ask for additional sampling. But in a tree, in a large site in which there's a fairly uniform tree coverage, I believe that this is a good idea. And finally, I know that the discussion this evening will be very robust, and so I felt the need for a moment of zen. So, I'm going to leave that up there for a minute so that we can all kind of enjoy that. And I am here to answer any questions that I can. I will tell you one thing. It's my fault that we need a tree ordinance because this is about one-tenth of the paper that I have generated from this project, and for that, I apologize.
Well, first of all, thank you, Ms. Busaka. And as I said before, clearly, the amount of work you've put in on this, along with your team and your staff, has been amazing. I don't think it's a secret. If it is, I wasn't, wasn't loud enough. I was, I thought we were where we needed to be, with some exceptions. Was, is the staff version a perfect ordinance? No. Will we walk out of here today and be a perfect version? No. I felt like with a few amendments, we could have gotten there, and we didn't. So, my first question to you, Ms. Busaka, is from where we were, and what I thought was a pretty good compromise compared to some of the other ordinances, tree ordinances submitted, were clearly, in my mind, more restrictive and difficult for developers. And I thought that what you guys had put together, you put together because you had met with developers, you had met with the tree, the tree team, the TEC, and I thought, as I said all along, we have to come together with some sort of compromise. And a compromise is something everybody likes until it's not your way. And so, I feel like we probably have a little bit of both of that going on here. So, my first question is, from where we were with the staff version that we were reading, the second reading already, where are we now compared to where we were 15 minutes before the end of the last meeting? And then we started our buffet ordering.
The changes that I can highlight are that the canopy requirements in the August ordinance extended to all, to all development types. And there were different canopy coverages, but the September ordinance has backed off of that requirement and has made canopy optional for, for multifamily, sub, any townhouses or single-family, but they're reviewed as multifamily with the, and I shouldn't say that. They're platted, but they look like multifamily, so they have been excluded from the canopy requirement. Industrial and commercial have been excluded from the canopy. Now, with the canopy requirements, were reduced mitigation requirements and additional flexibility, incentives, that kind of thing. So, when the council suggested that it would be perhaps worthy of consideration to make the commercial-industrial optional, that canopy requirement optional, those incentives have gone away for industrial and commercial and residential that is not in a subdivision. That is the largest change that we, that you directed. The burning was relatively a small change compared to that, and there has also been a couple of issues, and I, we sent that out as corrections, and they're very minor. So, those changes have been made. But the largest is, is related to canopy being mandatory or being optional for a large number of developments.
Counsel, anything you want to add? Yep, 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 yep. Member Jordan.
All right. First of all, I really appreciate all the hard work that staff has done, and actually appreciate TEC and Planning and Zoning, everyone who worked on this thing. This is, in my opinion, we've been working on this a long time, and I'm really ready to vote on, on this thing and go forward for sure. After the last meeting, I felt pretty comfortable that you captured everything that we had concerns with, and you actually have talked about every last one of them. We have to be real careful about, and I've said this from the beginning, I am a strong proponent of a person who buys some land to be able to do as much as possibly can with that land within reason. We have to protect the community for sure, but we also need to protect that, that person. It is very easy for a human being to say that they want to control somebody else's land. But when it comes down to their land, they don't want anybody to control it. So, I think, based on all the rail lines that have been incorporated since the last meeting, I'm pretty happy with what we have right now. The only thing I would like to change, and it is really pretty simple because I think we already have an ordinance. But before I get to that, I want to make sure that we all understand that what Ms. Busaka was talking about when it came down to residential versus, I'm sorry, single-family versus multifamily and commercial, multifamily and commercial are being looked at at the same way, correct?
As, yes, sir. That's correct.
Right.
As far as canopy.
As far as canopy, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But single-family is different, and I can understand. If you can just expound a little bit more on the multifamily and commercial and why that is different than the single-family, I think that would be advantageous.
Well, first, the, it, the differences between single-family and other types of residential is, currently exists in the code. There, I'm sorry, let me start again. There is a current difference between residential and commercial development in the code. Residential is currently required to have a 10% maintenance of vegetation. That is not required by commercial or industrial. The reason that I, that the ordinance is written the way it is, is because townhomes and multifamily structures tend to have a greater intensity and bulk than single-family. There's a maximum of six dwelling units per acre, oh, I'm sorry, a maximum of six dwelling units allowed in a building group of townhomes. Townhomes are single-family by ownership, but if you were to drive by them, you would think that they were multifamily. And multifamily are reviewed very much like a commercial site plan. In fact, they are approved as a site plan, but they are required to have parking areas, they're required to have driveways, they're required to have areas where you put dumpsters, they're required to have lighting that's different. This is all much more along the line of the commercial. In addition to that, townhomes, the minimum In addition to that, townhomes, the minimum lot size is much smaller for townhome development, three thousand square feet minimum for townhomes, and the smallest single family is sixty-five-hundred square feet. So what we see is that there is a less flexibility, I believe, in the design of those because there are more requirements set aside for them. In addition to that, there is different, there are different building coverage requirements for multifamily than single family. But the current status of the code is that all residential are treated the same, that single family is not brought out from underneath that. I also want to mention that we have a very rigorous landscape requirements. And I think one way that you can, that you can know that is the fact that after you've put all of the landscaping that you can put onto a site, we allow you to put, you've, you've done your mitigation, you've put all the landscaping that's required, and then we say you have the opportunity to mitigate with money to give to, and that's not a very artful way of saying it, but you, in lieu of planting more trees, you can put a donation into the trust fund for landscaping. Recently, we have seen more and more of these mitigation money being donated to this. And we have one project that I'm aware of where I believe the mitigation is going to be twenty-six or thirty-six thousand dollars. So there, so this is how I described it to someone, and it seemed like it was a good way to say it. The city currently believes in landscaping and putting trees in. What we don't have is a, is a requirement right now to maintain a lot of trees on site. In fact, we have no requirement to maintain trees on site for commercial and industrial. But we do have a very rigorous planting program through our landscape requirements. And because of our high mitigation standards and our high planting standards, it's often to the advantage of commercial and industrial to maintain as much as they can on site rather than to have to pay in that additional, either through the plantings or through the mitigation. So what I see is, there's going to be trees in this community, whether there's trees that are being maintained on site, whether there's trees that are being planted, this community will have trees and other landscaping as, as we see right now. So I'm not sure that that answered your question, but if you have anything else, I'd be happy to do my best.
Okay. The only other thing, no, you did answer the question because I, I needed that to be very clear to everyone, the rationale that why we're using commercial with the townhomes versus the single family. So everybody understands it. The only other concern I have, and after the people speak, and hopefully nothing changes too much, is that the grandfather provision that we have in it, and I know it's in another ordinance, but I, I think it would be clearer since we do have the tree ordinance now, that in section thirteen, B, C, and, B and C and D, it talks about development that has received final plat approval, site plan approval, sketch plat, but it doesn't say previously approved and recorded development agreement. I think that needs to be put in there just to make sure that whatever developer has something in place now, that it's crystal clear that the development agreement is still intact. And that would go for item B, item C, and add them to item D. Because the wording is almost the same in, in all three of those spots.
That's all I have, sir.
I thought we were good with grandfathering in, but I'm glad you pointed that out because that's a real important factor to me. If, if you are started somewhere in the process, you don't get a new rulebook. So we keep moving with that. Vice Mayor Nelson.
Actually, I think Peggy just answered my question, which was, why are we not including townhouses in this definition? But the other question I did have was, we talked about the other day, well, we actually talked about two, two separate things. And one was amending the code so that, like in the Public Plaza, that the trees actually grow as opposed to just being stagnant. And then I think we talked about looking at making sure we had more trees in front yards. And so those are the two things I'd like to see her come back with some ideas on.
If you, it, what would be great is advisability for both of those.
Yes.
Because they don't fit under their current advertisement.
No.
And I believe, we did talk with the arborist about ways that we could accomplish that. So if that is the direction of council, then I won't be bringing it back next week, but...
No.
Are we going to do this again?
Maybe next month.
No.
Well, I think what we're talking about for parking lots is, the reason that those trees don't grow very well in parking lots, our arborist tells us, is because the soils that are often put in those small areas are just not conducive. So we would be talking about a change to adding better soils or doing pH testing to make sure that those trees will actually get large enough so you can find a tree to park under. And then right now, we currently require boulevard trees and one tree in the front yard. And I think that the, what we were discussing is making sure that the tree is a large tree rather than a small tree so that we can kind of drive down a street and enjoy the trees in the front yard. So I think what we were thinking about is relatively minor, but, you know, that's, that's how our discussion had gone.
Yeah, but it's not something we can discuss tonight, but we'd have to ask Peggy to bring it back, so.
Right. Mayor, to answer your question, it would be a different ordinance because it had to be advertised differently than this. So if you take action on this, this would be a separate ordinance.
That's what I want to hear. Member Robinson?
Yes. Again, I, I ditto that the staff, P, environmental individuals and family and planting and zoning, thank you for your effort. And also to, what I like about what is being presented is that I read all of the minutes from the, these talks we've had about the tree ordinance, tree protection, and listened to what everyone has said, and also watched, re-watched some of the videos that was captured and what some of the individuals and everything that has been presented. And I know that we're going to get some tonight, but I won't have to compare what is being said tonight to see if that individual said the same thing the last time. But in doing that, I think that to go along with the, what the mayor says, that the compromise is the best that we can try to do, to try to make everyone as, win-win for everyone. And to do that, and what we gave, the direction that we gave to the staff on our last meeting about this in August, they have done a, a very good job, I think, in putting something like this in a nice package where it can grow. And we can, we can look at it and, and have enough open flexibility that if something is added or need to be looked at, we can take it before others and say, okay, let, under this situation, we can look at it this way. But it has been a long time, and the staff put together side by side, some of the comparisons would made it a lot of, a lot easier to evaluate. I want to thank them for that. It has been, I spent probably totally on this tree ordinance over the, my short tenure here, than it's been before us. I think I've probably put eighty hours or so into this and tried to give my little input on, on putting things together. And I, now, I'm glad and ready to hear all of the input tonight. And I, I probably, I looked out over the faces that I see, most of them are the same faces that has been here before. And hopefully, when they get up and give their input tonight, it would be counter-reflective of what they said before the last two times. And if it is, I think we've done a pretty good job to try to give guidance to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Robinson. Member Stokoe.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, I'm hopeful that we'll vote on this tonight. I think that whatever we end up voting on, it will be a compromise. The three areas that I'm looking for a little bit more, I guess, clarification or maybe compromise on, the canopy, I think my intent at the last meeting was for all residential. So it was kind of a surprise for me to see the single family. Just to clarify, are you concerned that if it was applicable to multifamily, that they, it would just not be feasible whatsoever?
I can't say I am. What I can tell you is I honestly thought that's what council said, so.
Okay.
The other thing I have to tell you is my bedtime is typically between eight-thirty and nine o'clock, so anything that happens after that, it may have been all on me, so...
Okay. So that's kind of where I'm personally leaning, is all residential on the canopy requirement. The other one, the burning on site, I know I was the one that said, no, I think we should allow it. I started thinking about it after, I got some emails after. If we do allow it, I would like to see some incentives for those that choose not to do it. But again, that was one I kind of am a little bit, maybe wanting to change my opinion on. And then the last one, to Member Jordan's point, was the grandfathering. I just want to make sure that anyone that's kind of started the process and with the intent to do some type of development, they are not going to be hurt by this because they've already started that process. So that's another aspect that I want to clarify.
We kind of got a little table set here. I'd like to reiterate that this has been a two-year process. We've had multiple committees turn in their version of an ordinance. I felt, after looking at them all, that the staff had a reasonable version that isn't going to make everybody happy on both sides. That's not what the whole thing was about. It was what we think is best for our city. I said prior, I don't ever want to go back to 2008. This has been a pro-growth council as far as votes go. I feel like I have voted for every smart growth ordinance or, or development that's come in front of us. Sometimes I've voted two or three times for it, so I look to the back of the room, and we're moving forward. But at the same time, I, I also know that having lived here since 1965, there's an awful lot of beauty here that we need to take seriously. And I think that the staff version tries to do both. We don't want to hinder development, but when the word smart growth, we throw that around a lot. That's a word, smart's hard to define, depending on what side you want to see. But smart growth means we got to be careful with what we're doing, but we've got to continue to grow. With that, how many cards do we have?
We have eighteen cards.
Oh, that's close. I was going to say seventeen. All right, let's get them started. Stan wants to go.
Okay. First card is Kay Sainton.
Yes, I'm Kay Sainton, and I live on Maryland Avenue in Titusville. As said, the September 2021 Tree Protection Ordinance before you tonight represents two and a half years of teamwork between staff, the advisory boards, developers, and the community to develop, to develop a tree protection ordinance. Meetings were held with developers, and their viewpoints were carefully considered by staff in the drafting of this ordinance. Staff has incorporated the directives of council every step of the way. On August 24th, council asked for additional changes to be made to the draft, and these have been included in this latest version. I believe the tree protection provisions in the September 2021 version would benefit residents, wildlife, aquifer, and the lagoon. By protecting tree canopy, temperatures would be reduced in new neighborhoods, wildlife habitat would be provided, aquifers would be recharged, and stormwater pollutants discharged into the lagoon would be reduced, benefiting the manatees. By protecting tree canopy, the September 2021 Tree Protection Ordinance would help create a community in high demand by new residents. I ask that tonight you adopt the September 2021 Tree Protection Ordinance and the provisions in the errata sheet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Next card.
It's Pam, it's D I R S C H K A.
I guess I don't come quite often enough. Derschka. My name is Pam Derschka. I live at 495 Arbor Ridge Lane. And I would ask you to approve the tree ordinance. What I really would like is for you to approve an earlier version that, that was placed because I think it has been weakened. I especially agree that all residential and also to restrict the burning on the lots be considered tonight. It seems like early on, this council did support the tree, the Titusville Environmental Committee version, and also the planning and zoning. But as developers and realtors, past and current commissioners came to speak, it seems like it has, has gotten weaker, and I'm really sorry about that. You've heard the benefits of trees, the concerns about the Indian River Lagoon, so I'm not going to repeat those. I've heard comments here that some of the best land in Titusville has already been built on, so it requires a lot of fill to be able to build. And that makes me pause and think, perhaps those are not buildable lots, and we don't have to build on every area. I often hear people talk about having an increased tax base, and this is a fallacy. Do you ever know of a highly populated area that has a real low tax base? The more people we get, the more we clear, the more we build, we have to provide more, and it just doesn't happen that it stays, stays low. So the last few months, many of my generation have lost their parents. I recently lost my father-in-law, and I've been reading a lot of obituaries. And I don't mean to be depressing here, but I would like you to think about what will be said about your time on the Titusville City Council. You know, we've had a lot of positive things, but we've also had a lot of things that have happened with the deterioration of the Indian River Lagoon and a lot of things that are of concern. So I would like you to think about what your commitment to Titusville is and how you're going to make it better, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, it, it's hard for me not to at least say that, I guess, Joe, you've been here, Member Robinson, you've been here about six months. Member Jordan? Okay. And the point I'm making is, well, that lagoon's been, been an issue decades. We're working on that. And I would say that this council has done everything it can as far as funding and voting and, and supporting the Indian River Lagoon projects. So, you know, again, I'm, I'm a guy who missed seeing the mullet jump out there.
Yeah.
And catching blowfish and all those things, believe me. So with that said, did you want to say something as well?
I just wanted to say Pam's father-in-law was a good man, I worked with him, and I'm really sorry to hear that.
Thank you. Next card.
I'm Kate Perez. I live at 3025 South Washington Avenue. And I also would like to see staff's version of the tree ordinance, ordinance adopted. I, I agree with Pam, though, that it has been weakened since the first version, and that's a shame because we've been going, as you acknowledged... a shame because, um, we've been going, as you acknowledged, in the wrong direction on the lagoon for a long, long time. We should be doing more, not less. About the growth thing, I hear people on the council saying, well, uh, if you, if a city's not growing, it's dying. And that's something that we used to see in our Econ 101 textbooks in college. That used to be the prevailing idea. Nowadays, if you read a lot of the newer economy economics professors, sorry, that they talk about the opposite of growth is not death. Death is the result of overgrowth, of out of control growth. The opposite of growth is sustainability. That's the new thinking in a lot of these, uh, communities, sustainability. It's, and it doesn't mean zero growth. It means sustainable growth so that we don't use up the resources that are not, um, that, that are finite, they're finite resources. And it could be, we could be talking about oil, we could be talking about lumber, we could be talking about a lot of things. But in the case of Titusville, we're talking about the lagoon, which is the thing that brings people here. This is why people want to come here, live here, vacation here, do biological research here. Uh, I think today we're up to pretty close to 950 dead manatees now. So we're closing in on a thousand. And we can't put that genie back in the bottle. We don't know how to do it. I know the Chesapeake, which is where I worked most of my career in the DC area, they've been, my whole lifetime, they've been trying to restore the Chesapeake Bay to what it once was. And they spent millions and millions and they've had armies of volunteers, but as of today, they've managed to regrow 10% of the oysters that once were there. That's how hard it is to put that genie back in the bottle. We don't have the power to save the river right now, but we do have the power to save as many trees as we can because we know that they absorb the polluted storm water. We know that they filter it before it goes back into the lagoon. And they also prevent excess deaths from heat. And they save the creatures, they provide habitat for the animals, the birds and things that bring people here. You know, like the birding festival. We've seen a lot less birds. I'm a big birder. We've seen a lot less in the last five years or so. The water's not clean, the trees are being destroyed. I don't know where they go. If they, I hope they go somewhere, maybe they're just gone. But that's the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next card, please.
Deborah Tompkinsen.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm Deborah Tompkinsen, 660 Ordel Avenue. It's good to be here. Thank you for listening to Another Voice. I know you've gotten some emails from me and I appreciate the responses that I've gotten. Um, I also support the tree ordinance and I would like to make sure that the, uh, that single housing thing goes to the apartments and the townhouses. I'd love to see more townhouses really than single family here. Like to see the, um, consideration being for everybody in the neighborhood, not just people bringing in, uh, development to grow houses as a way to grow. But, uh, we've looked at other communities as well. To tell you the truth, you know, to downsize, maybe leave our dear Titusville, but the other places are lovely, other towns are lovely, lots of trees, Winter Springs, Port Orange, New Smyrna, but it's so expensive. And the only reason I can figure out is their house value is more is because it's beautiful and they, they, um, they really hold everybody to code enforcement, which we're not doing here quite as well. It's a different topic though. But I really do appreciate the fact that, um, you will have great canopy, 50% when they're mature. Keep that. I would love to see it with commercial as well as residential. Been traveling a lot recently. There are a lot of trees in downtowns in front of stores. It's lovely. You can sit out on your park benches. And then just keep in mind that everything you do today, this decision, it's not a little one. We may seem like a little city, but our impact is huge. Every big tree does so much good. So think about us little people. Everyone I've talked to, I know last time I sat in here, Mr. Diesel, you said you represent 47,000 or whatever we are now, but they're not here. But every single person I have talked to out in the community, every single one has said, what on earth did they do to such and such development? They raised the trees. It should not have been allowed. No one that I've spoken to has said, yay for that development that took out the trees and they're going to replant them. Oh, it's going to be so beautiful. That doesn't happen. So this is on you. Please think of us little people, think of my children's children, et cetera, et cetera. Thanks for listening. Appreciate you have a hard job. I wouldn't want it. Thank you.
She's pretty good. All right, let's go to, uh, next one.
Tony Shifalo.
I'm sorry?
Tony Shifalo.
Tony Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street, the historic Norwood House. For over two years now, you've heard citizens of Brevard County and resident voters of Titusville talk with both emotional appeals and scientific appeals about the importance of tree and soil preservation on large tracts of land. The scientific base has been researched for you by respected botanists, environmentalists, landscapers, and even rocket scientists on the tree team. The debate has been listened to and interpreted in the language of ordinances by your overworked staff, bringing to you today a final, although imperfect, but tweakable ordinance for your acceptance. On the other hand, we've all endured the whining of out-of-town developers, lawyers, and real estate agents, limiting all that driving they've had to do to come up from Melbourne and time spent to come to so many meetings and still Titusville residents want them to save more trees, thus depriving them of maximum profit. We've even had veiled and direct threats made against the city if we vote to stymie growth. Yes, we want economic growth for our town, but we don't want it to grow without consideration for the infrastructure, the environment, and the Indian River Lagoon. Yes, we want to preserve more of the trees that are standing now. We realize the benefits of mature forests in soaking up storm water, sifting out pollutants, and replenishing the atmosphere and aquifers. For every standing tree, less pollution gets into the dying Indian River Lagoon. We've all seen on the news, both fake and real news, a growing concern about the Earth's environment. We've seen cities all around striving to rebuild a tree canopy sufficient to maintain healthy citizens. And that brought me to the point of wondering why you would even want to consider having trees burned on the land instead of mulched. You have a choice tonight to adopt a tree protection ordinance that is a compromise between the citizens who vote and the developers who develop. To not adopt this ordinance that's presented is to keep the woefully inadequate ordinance that's now on the books and it's not even heavily enforced. So I would stand before you to say, please, please, vote yes for the staff version that's brought forward to you tonight. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Next card, please.
Maureen Root, Port St. John, but I'm on the Titusville tree team. Um, I did send you an email. I have a couple of concerns. I think they're on the errata sheet about palms. Um, page 11, section 7, I'm not going to go into all that, but it says nuisance trees shall be removed, a permit is not required. And a list of nuisance trees shall be those identified by the Florida Exotic Pest Plant Council. No reference anywhere on nuisance trees. And if there's no definition, then it's left to the definition to me of the developers. There are two categories of invasive species. Category one, invasive exotics that are altering native plant communities by displacing native species. And category two, that are not altering the plant communities by displacing native species and much more to it. But palms are also in this. Palms are exclu, seem to be excluded everywhere. And palms, that's a symbol of Florida. It's on the seal of Florida. It's up there on your seal of Titusville. And they're what you're calling nuisance trees? I just wanted to, to, to say that black mangroves are on the invasive species list here, but you do have to have a permit to cut them down. These things should be put into, they're important. And I hope that you'll pass the errata sheet with these changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Thomas Perez.
Hi, Tom Perez. 3025 South Washington Avenue. I have nothing more, more to add. I just wanted to, uh, be supportive, okay, of the people that have worked so hard for our new tree ordinance. Okay, yeah, it's imperfect. There's a lot of things that I would like to have. I would like to have the tech version, obviously. I think that was really, really low on the scale of things. I thought we did a great job trying to provide the kind of input and recommendations that this body should appreciate. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think you did a great job too, by the way. So we'll leave it at that. Again, I can't say enough, I think Member Jordan just said it earlier, uh, we got PNZ, TEC, staff, uh, a lot of hard work, a lot of hard work, a lot of dedication. Next card, please.
Lori Lee Thompson.
Hi, um, Lori Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MEMS. Today was a remarkable day for me. I have lots of remarkable days, but today really stood out. I started out at breakfast with Robin Fisher, who was kind enough to describe the developers' concerns about how the tree ordinance could impact their projects. And then I had lunch with the executive director of the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, the vice chair of the FWC Board of Commissioners, the deputy director of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the IRL liaison for St. John's River Water Management District, and several high-level FWC biologists. They took a boat tour of the Southern Mosquito Lagoon this morning to see for themselves what has happened to our waters. Earlier this summer, some tiny patches of seagrass grew, grew close to the shorelines and they hoped to see some of that grass, but it had already been eaten by the manatees. None survived long enough to go to sea. I asked them if manatees had starved to death anywhere else in Florida. The answer was no. Northern Brevard County owns this public relations nightmare. I asked, what are you doing to address the situation? And they replied that nothing can be done to make the seagrass grow until the water quality gets fixed and it's logistically impossible to supplementally feed the 2,000 manatees that come to the Port St. John Power Plant every winter. So they're getting some new trucks and more trailers so they can retrieve the carcasses faster than they did last year to remove them from public scrutiny. Pictures from the manatee boneyard are unhealthy for the Sunshine State's image. I asked if Visit Florida had been informed that hundreds more manatees will die this winter so they can start preparing their typical disaster messaging that they do whenever tourism is threatened by ugly publicity. They said no, but that's a really good idea. They're going to tell Visit Florida to get ready. Past development patterns contributed to the demise of our river. Taxes from future development could help fund some fixes. It's been two years since we began this odyssey to save some trees. I got involved because preserving existing trees is an important strategy for reducing polluted storm water from going into the river. For me, it's all about the river. It was never my intent to harm any projects that were already on the books. My hope was that we could move forward with new developments in a manner that would reduce impacts to the river. Peggy and her staff have spent hundreds of hours accommodating the many requests for tweaks and clarifications from both sides. It's time to move on. Please approve staff's version of the tree protection ordinance tonight and trust your staff to ensure that projects that were already on the books can continue as planned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next card, please.
Mary Spar.
Good evening. I'm Mary Spar and I'm speaking for Sierra Club. I do live in Cocoa, by the way. Okay. Sierra Club supports the tree protection ordinance, but, um, the final one from staff with this, uh, sheet of the errata cor, corrections, which is very important. And we recognize that this is a compromise ordinance. From the start, we have supported the very necessary balance between economic development and tree protection. Just to make sure that all applicants, including those with adverse site conditions, are treated with respect and fairness, we support the ordinance's built-in legal safety valve of the appeals slash variance section. To make sure that applicants do not have to backtrack on plans already developed, we accept the grandfathering provision. I'm a big believer in evaluating developments to see if the ordinance would work. I looked at landscape plans for eight residential subdivisions and found that some of them could easily satisfy the canopy area requirements. Now others might have to make some adjustments, doable, not impossible adjustments. In particular, use the PD ordinance to cluster the homes. Use LID or possibly give up a few lots, not many lots, but a few. One project was part of a phased development with a conservation area containing the canopy detached, uh, from the first phase. This ordinance with staff's definition of development area can deal with such a situation. The developments I looked at did not envision the canopy requirements. With proper planning from the start, the residential canopy area percentages are definitely achievable. Recently, I've looked at plans for some industrial and commercial developments, plus I revisited the plans for an apartment complex. What surprised me most is that a small commercial project and a small industrial project, both under three acres, would likely comply. The small industrial project would save a lot of money with the new ordinance. The apartment project might be able to meet the optional canopy requirements and save money with just a few more trees planted in legally protected canopy areas. I hope that the development community will look at the optional canopy percentages with an open mind. In other words, please don't decide right off the bat that the ordinance will have dire consequences for a project. Instead, give it a chance. We're at the finish line now after a very long process. It's your turn to give this ordinance a chance. Please get the job done tonight and approve the ordinance with the errata corrections.
Thank you very much. Next card.
Tater Carson.
Yeah, my name's Tater Carson and, uh, I like to start by saying I love trees. But I do think that this ordinance is going to hurt developers and, uh, future development, economical growth for Titusville. Uh, I've got five developments right now in four different counties and this ordinance right here would kill every one of the developments I got, uh, going on right now. I own the property there between Washington to Indian River, between Broad and Main Street, that whole city block. I have intentions one day. I have intentions, one day, to go vertical with that property, and this ordinance will not allow me to do it. I think you've got to get more creative with this ordinance, the definition of a heritage tree. I think I've walked several thousand acres in Brevard County from MEMS to Melbourne, and I know a lot of the trees out there. And I think choosing better trees and letting the developers, you know, develop with a PUD, identifying their buffer zones, their canopies, and maybe a percentage of trees that go into the development. But stopping them from cutting down trees is going to stop development in Titusville. It will put us two decades back. And I believe there's, you know, professional arborists that can give some better opinions. And I know I've just come in, I just heard about this. So you guys have been working on this for a couple of years, but I can tell you, what I was going to do downtown Titusville will never be able to be done without ordinance. And I think multifamily, single-family, industrial, commercial, the staff can identify by the project, by the use, by the species of the trees, and eliminate, you know, you've got 50% of the trees here in Brevard County are rubber trees or cabbage junk palm trees. If we took it upon ourselves to let the developers pay with their money to get rid of these junk trees and bring in nice oak trees and nice Canary Island day palms or Sylvester palms, it'd make the city look a lot nicer. With property taxes, you slow down development. I believe property taxes will go up. Less of a population with the expenses the city has and the things that we need to do for our river, the residents are going to pay. And how are we going to do that? We're going to do it through property taxes. My property taxes downtown Titusville go up 10%, 15% every year. I haven't done anything. If you, with, can I say one more thing?
Say one more thing.
Pardon me?
Go ahead, one more thing.
Yeah, the, between the city, the state, the county, and the federal government owns a huge percentage of North Titusville. And with that being said, and I don't think any developer's asking to go and cut down the trees on federal land, they're going to remain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card, please.
Good evening. Rodney Honeycutt, 3700 South Washington Avenue in Titusville. First, I support the fact that there's no canopy requirement in the commercial industrial. I appreciate that change. I can give you an example. I own a project I'm working on. It just happens he's on a road that has a large frontage buffer, and so it happens that his site is 20% landscape buffer. Stormwater on the site's generally 20%, and his building is 13%. The rest of it's parking lot. So, you know, sites like this are very difficult to be adding more on, and we have a limited amount of commercial industrial property in the city. So I thank you for that change. Generally, I'm opposed to new regulations that put more regulations on development of undeveloped property. I might, would be less opposed to it if the existing development that happened years ago along the river, where it has no stormwater management and that has old sewer lines that can possibly leak into the lagoon unless that's addressed along with it. I don't think that's, that's fair. New, new developments now have stormwater requirements, particularly since 2009, that are very strict for not only the quantity, but the quality of the stormwater. And new sewer lines nowadays, leak test, lift stations, duplex, if one pumps out, the other pump work, generators, standby power. I mean, so that's not, that's not causing the Indian River problem. It's the problem all over the years that we weren't, you know, we didn't have those I'm in support of the grandfathering you talked about, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the fact, although I don't want to add it and extend this any longer, about the tree maintenance in the, in existing large parking lots particularly. I think that's a great idea. Maybe in a year or something, we'll talk about that. But, but thank you very much for all your efforts you put in this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Next card.
Stan Johnston, 860 points at Avenue. I'm a residential engineer. I've done numerous subdivisions in the city of Titusville, numerous site plans, but that was years ago. My goodness, I'm 75 years old, and I've stopped doing site plans probably over 30 years ago. So, well, maybe 25. I'm here to say the same thing I said before, so just, just, in other words, I talked about some trees are more important. In other words, live oaks are a more valuable tree than a much shorter-lived laurel oak. I'm concerned about losing a number of large, beautiful live oaks because construction equipment, parking, whatever happened during construction destroyed the root system somehow or something, because five years later, these beautiful majestic trees died. And I also commented about the erroneous floodplains because erroneous floodplains can result in, in clearcutting, and that's, that's something to be avoided. I'm also commenting about, someone said that, someone spoke to you about the bad, bad things I've said about council and that they're untrue. And the thing is, I want you to understand, is if these things are untrue that I've said about these council members, I would have been sued a long time ago for defamation of character. And I'm explaining to you why I have not been able to sue for defamation of character. The particular person that spoke of that was just only one person who, as far as I'm concerned, just gave you some free phony baloney, and that's Robin Fisher. And so I'm just wondering, with the phony baloney that he gave you about me, I wonder if people going to get insurance. He, he did it on me. I think I should do it on him.
We're talking about trees. If you want to talk about trees, you've got 58 seconds left. If you don't, we're done.
Okay. All right. Okay. In other words, when I said, in other words, these things that I said about the trees.
Don't, I'm telling you.
About the trees.
Talk about the trees. You're going to be escorted out of here. Cover what you need to cover.
Oh. In other words, Mr. Fisher, can, he can tell, he can talk about me up here, but I can't talk about him.
Stan.
Is that what you've got, buddy?
Turn around.
Is that what you've got, buddy?
Stan.
Okay. Trees, trees, trees. Trees, more trees and more trees. Let's, let's face it. Let's be fair about, in other words, when I speak, I can talk about trees, and I should be able to talk when someone says nasty things about me that are untrue. You let him say things, but I'm talking about trees, and I'm talking about nasty things that were untrue. Now, I wish what you would do is go ahead and try to sue me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
Edward Newman.
You taking notes on that? A little less drama than that, but Edward Newman, 1425 Lower Circle, Rockledge, owner of Darkstorm Industries and Darkstorm Development. Nice to meet all of you in person. Apologies for the attire, came from work. Developing a property at 2,000 Shepherd Parkway in Titusville. So, excuse me, I wanted to put some real perspective and numbers on to this. So, really didn't think much about trees, didn't know much about trees, trying to learn about trees. My God, is this language confusing on some of this, of our different options. So we've hired some professionals and are evaluating that, just to put some perspective on it. Under the current tree ordinance, we've been provided budgetary numbers ranging from $43,000 to $88,000 for the property. Okay? Wow. Yeah, it's surprising when you actually look at it. Now, you don't really usually calculate that number out separately. Honestly, we probably wouldn't have even talked about it, and it just falls into a big landscape budget, because there are significant landscape requirements on these sites, as I'm sure you're all aware. So, couple of the thoughts on it. So obviously, the grandfathering is a, is a grave concern for projects like us that are already underway. So we want to make sure that's protected on there. Okay? The, maintaining the option to use the existing language as compared to the canopy, which is in this current revision, we are strongly in favor of. I think, again, the more options you can provide, the better. Okay? I wanted to give you some comparisons and other things. We're in a global economy. I'll show you what the tree ordinance is for Shenzhen, China. Blank piece of paper. New Delhi, India. Blank piece of paper. All right, listen, that's not fair. I'll give you that. But let's talk about more realistic. Texas, just passed SB 744, a statewide law that overrides and restricts city and other municipalities on their tree ordinances. Now, it didn't say they can't have one, but it placed some requirements on it. You have to be able to have offsets where the mitigation can be done, so you end up with a net cost of zero, no penalty. You've got that right now. Another interesting thing, the mitigation factors in it are about one-fifth is the maximum of what you have. That is a concern, and that is partially what is driving some of our costs. When you look to either plant new trees, and you're taking down a number of trees, again, there's a cost to plant that tree. Does it disappear into the landscape budget? Yes, but it is still a cost attributable to the tree ordinance. If you're going to preserve land, which is what we're looking at doing in our project, there's still a cost for that land. So there are different pieces to this. So I would, I would ask you to think about considering some of that type of action. Also, the indirect impacts of this, the, as you raise the cost, these 1% to 2% project cost, multiply that by multiple different ordinances, the cost of everything goes up. The cost of housing goes up. The cost of those homes that people want to live in, in those nice neighborhoods with the big trees. Why are they $300,000 versus $200,000? Let's be honest, part of it is because of preserving those trees. If the market, if the 46,900 people that are not here tonight to speak on this, Mr. Mayor, more time? Thank you, sir. If they all truly believed in those trees and wanted them in their development, the free market, all those housing developments would have all those trees and be placed.
All right, good.
So I just urge caution.
Thank you.
So, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Next card, please.
Can I add something?
I hope not.
Two seconds.
You want him back?
If it makes you feel better, it's $5,000 a tree, for every tree that's removed in France.
Bang. Oh, next card, I'm sorry.
It's Bruce Moy.
All right, let's start it.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Bruce Moy. I'm the Government Affairs Chairman for the HBCA, representing over 300 members that do development in this county. So we've had lots of conversations about this ordinance, and we were, you know, we're not super happy with it. We don't want to say that we love it, but we're okay with it. And I gave you on your list just two things to think about, and I'm going to make it even simpler, because I forgot how clever Peggy is. I mean, I worked for, for four years, and she, she, number two, you can just forget about it, because she, she fooled us, thinking that she didn't take the commercial industrial out, but she did. What she basically did is she said that you don't have to have mitigation, because if you, and you get the option, if you want to do the preservation, you don't have to have the mitigation. So, very well, very well done, very well done. So we're fine with that. So we'll take two off the table, which leaves us down to one thing, and we'll be really just okay with this ordinance. And that is, and this is kind of mirrors what Brevard County does, and I think it makes the ordinance a little bit stronger. I don't think it weakens it any. It actually encourages you to plant more mature trees. So instead of those little sticks that you get to meet the qualifications of a required tree, allow the developer the flexibility that if he plants a larger tree, four inches or larger, or four inch or six inch, so basically almost a mature tree at day one, he gets to enjoy 100% of that tree towards mitigation, as opposed to the difference between the size and the required. So instead of a four inch minus two and a half, for an inch and a half of mitigation, they get the entire four inches because they're planting a more expensive, better tree. Because what happens is nature can grow trees right next to each other. We can't do that. Trees will not, you can't plant trees next to trees. They won't grow. They'll never mature. So in order to get the spacing to make that tree grow and thrive, you start losing property really, really fast. So what the county did in its infinite wisdom, and maybe this is something she did when she was there, is they allowed you to have that flexibility to encourage better trees at day one, that will grow faster, will look better, and allow the developer to meet mitigation requirements a little bit easier, because nothing pains a developer more than spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on trees and then having to write the city a check for another couple hundred thousand dollars, because they can't fit it on the site. And it does happen, and that burns. That really stings. We hear it all the time. So if you can consider that, and I even wrote the language in there for you, if you can consider that, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. That was interesting. Next card, please.
Simon Strafford, Strafford Tree Surgery, here in Titusville. Hello. Development is a necessity for human nature, and development of our environment is the only thing we can develop. So that's a given. But there is a trade-off, and the trade-off is what happens and the impact to the environment. So I thought I'd just outline a couple of areas that may invoke some thought. When you walk out into the natural environment, when you stand there, each foot stands on about 100 miles of mycelium, which is the fungal network that joins every single green thing that grows on this planet. Without it, we don't exist. It transfers carbon around the green environment. It breaks down matter, its molecular structure, and separates nutrients back available for trees and gives carbon distribution, but it makes topsoil. So that topsoil, for one inch of topsoil, takes approximately 100 years. So when you take off 10 inches of topsoil pre-development, you are removing about 1,000 years of accumulated work. That is, given the average age of a male or female in the U.S., about 12 generations has gone. I'm not saying that shouldn't happen, but you need to be aware that that is what goes into it. Nature, we were talking about tipping point, or it's called a tipping point, is where nature is pushed to a point where it's irreversible. We have the polar ice caps, the Arctic and the Antarctic. At the top, we have Greenland. It has a glacier that was two and a half miles high. So at the top, it sits in a very cold atmosphere, so it stays frozen. With global temperatures warming, the bottom of it has been melting. That brings the top down into a warmer atmospheric area, and that accelerates the melting. You cannot reverse that. It's impossible. So you pass that tipping point in nature. You have to be very careful when you're developing, not just homes, but when we are developing to live, that you understand from the experts, whoever they may be, and I don't know who you're using, but you understand all the factors that go around it. There was a mention about burning. You weren't sure. There's a study that has been commissioned by UF that has been going on for about six months now, these wildfires in California. Everyone had assumed that everything was burnt up. In that smoke, there is live virus and live fungal spores that are carried in it, and they've been capturing them on drones. This is how our fungal spores and viruses, sorry, can I?
You want a few more, 30 seconds a minute?
Yeah. That's how these.
Wait, we got to decide.
Oh, sorry.
Let's go one minute. Thank you.
Okay. That's how these things move around. So maybe that's a consideration when you're looking at burning. The other thing is tree planting. Certain trees give off VOCs, volatile organic compounds. They react with nitrous oxides from exhaust that creates ozone gas at ground level, which causes respiratory diseases. There are certain species you have to be careful of mandating to be planted. That's probably about my minute.
Well, no, that was actually 30 seconds, but if you're good, we're good. Well, no, that was actually 30 seconds, but if you're good, we're good.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Hold on one second.
I'm not sure if I understood. So are you saying it's good to burn on, on site and not good to burn on site?
If you are burning, you're releasing live viral and fungal spores. They don't get incinerated. They're carried on the smoke. So wherever that smoke drifts, you're going to capture that. I mean, viruses are a very topical point at the moment. That's how it moves around the globe. It just doesn't move with people. Only 20% of the cells in your body are human. Outside of water, the balances bacteria, virus, and fungal spores, that's your biome. It's the same with everything that lives on this planet. We are just a host, and the same with trees and everything else. And that is how this stuff moves around. So there's a lot more consideration to be taken in when you make these decisions about the types of ordinance and what you want to achieve at the end of it, in my opinion. And I think you have to be very careful of the scientific evidence that you draw on and who it is that's qualified to give it and what their experience is. So there, there's a whole balance involved in this, and I'm not sitting one side or the other because everyone in here is living in a house that was developed. We need development, but you are developing your environment. Everyone needs to do better. Everyone needs to try better, just a little bit, and take other factors out and just sit back and think, okay, is this the right thing to do? And what am I expecting long-term? Because once you go past that tipping point, nature will not allow you to come back. It doesn't matter how much money. The one thing, sorry, I've gone over, but the one thing that every human being is born with on this planet, no matter where he's born, is the same thing. It's 24 hours in a day. No matter how rich you are, you cannot buy time. And once you run out of time with nature.
With that, your time is up.
Wait, 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 wait.
I had to get in there on that. That's perfect. So thank you so much.
Oh, one question?
We already did. His time is up.
Two questions?
Go ahead. What's your question?
I don't know at this fair Simon to ask you, but it seems like burning creates respiratory problems.
It does, yes. And respiratory problems because of what is carried in that smoke particularly. So if you are vulnerable and you have a compromised system, which again is very topical, then you are going to be more predisposed towards it.
Some people with COPD and those kind of illnesses are going to be affected.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you again. Next card, please.
I believe it's Carrie Stafford.
Oh, they're tag teaming. They're tag teaming on us.
Carrie Strafford, Strafford Tree Surgery, Tidersville, Florida. I was going to tag team with my husband, say he, he has my time, but I thought I'll go ahead and come up here. And one of the things Simon and I talked about, we were at the, one of the last council meetings, and you spoke very eloquently about COVID, what was going on in Tidersville, and encouraging the vaccine, and talking about trusting in the science. Well, the same thing with what we're all talking about with trees. It's trusting the science and listening to the science and reading the science for both sides, for both the tree and the developers. I have been currently working on a project for the county, redoing a whole re, tree replanting scheme for an HOA who took out all their trees because it was easier to have grass. But the thing is that I was very grateful for the person I've been working with, Jean Allen at the county, is that she listened to the science. Because the one thing I said is right tree, right place. We tested 20 places in that HOA that, as you, I think Ms. Basilica, did I say your name correctly? That. That you have to touch, you have to test the pH levels because trees that may be being planted in these developments may not be the right tree for that pH level. An oak tree needs, a live oak needs 1,000 square feet to grow in. And how many of us have seen these oak trees, field oaks, be planted in a postage stamp? It's not the right tree. And so, in all honesty, you know, I can understand what the developers are saying, but they also need to make sure they're planting the right trees so you do have a forward canopy. You know, when you do plant a canopy, you have to expect 25 years' growth. And there's other ways we can go about before we clear cut everything down. You can have islands of canopies that you stay and that you can build around it. But the thing is, everyone keeps wanting to go down the same route. They don't want to think outside the box. And I would ask the council, and maybe somehow you work into this ordinance, that every project is decided on merit. You have your base level, but you know, each piece of land and each piece of property is different. You don't know what soil's there. You have to bring in different soils to build. It affects the soil, and it affects the longevity of the soil, and, and, and a landscape may look, look good for 10 years, and after that, it starts to decline. Because Mother Nature's going to revert back. You've got the building dirt that's brought in, and it ends up, there's nothing in the soil. It's zero, there's no nutrients. So you end up having to spend thousands and thousands of dollars of trying to put fertilizations, which then is no good thing to our lagoon. So we're back to that, that discussion. So there you go. There's a big circle there. But the thing is, people don't want to step outside the box. And I asked the council to start stepping outside the box.
Thank you. I taught biology for 13 years. You two could be guest speakers. I'm serious. That's, that's good stuff. Next card, please.
Dwight Severs.
How you doing? Hey. For the record, my name is Dwight Severs. I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. I was with some of you at your July 16, 2019 meeting where we discussed this and all started the process. Obviously, I would prefer you consider the planning and zoning recommendation. However, and I could think of probably 10 different items with the staff version that I don't necessarily like, but it's time to move forward. And we know ordinances can be amended or modified, and, but it's time to move forward. And I would respectfully suggest that you move forward with the proposal that staff has presented to you, and hopefully, things will improve. And it certainly concerned me with Laura Lee Thompson has been saying and is saying, and I see personally every day as I look out across the water in the condition of the Indian River Lagoon. Maybe that's just happened in the last few years because of, of existing old development. But what I do really know is for the last 30 years, people have been constructing retention ponds and then complying with St. John's regulations, and the condition of the Indian River Lagoon 30 years ago was far better than it is today with the development that has occurred in the last 30 years. But let's move forward, and we'd hope that you would do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card, please.
The last card is Kate Oliver.
Good evening. Since I have the unfortunate distinction of being the last card, I'll also try to be the briefest. Name's Cole Oliver, representing Tranquility Development, formerly known as the Antigua Bay Development. And, you know, just wanted to make sure that, first, to thank the staff and the public bodies that have considered this ordinance. It's been a yeoman's effort and a lot of thought and consideration has gone into it. And with that, we're not opposed to it. We'd just like for the abundance of clarity to make sure that those pre-existing development agreements are grandfathered in, given the amount of time and effort and money that has been expended under the previously approved ordinances. On behalf of my client, that's all I'd have to say. I would like to add on the burning that, you know, we talk a lot about the natural ecosystems. I also have the pleasure of sitting on the St. John's Water Management Governing Board District. We expend a lot of money as a district for burning of the land. It is a natural part of Florida's ecosystem, the periodic burning of the scrub land. Just keep that in mind as you guys, we don't have a position on that on behalf of my client as far as the burn ban, but it is a natural part of the ecosystem as us as humans that have interfered with that. I think a lot of what's being seen in the West is these massive fires that are accumulation of ages-old combustible material that has built up because they've been suppressing the natural burn cycle throughout the generations. But with that, I'll sit down and thank you all for consideration.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And just to confirm, that was the last card? All right, I, I, you know, obviously, we're going to do council discussion and move forward. I'm glad that Dwight was one of the last ones because he continued my discussion from last meeting. We got to do something. We got to make a move. We got to call a play, and I won't say that ever again, I promise. But we got to call a play, and, and there's no kicking the can any further. I reiterate again, this has been a two-year process. The staff is met, remet. We had PNZ, we had TEC, we had staff. We had staff meet with developers. And again, my feeling is that we need to do what we need to do to respect and preserve trees, but we also need to do what we need to do to make sure that our developers have a fair market and can move forward, and, and we grow and don't go backwards. And I think that we came as close to that as we could with the staff. I think maybe a few things changed one way or the other from the last meeting. It sounds to me mostly like the changes were appreciated. There are some who feel like it weakened things, as I said, whenever that meeting was. But a few weeks ago, there's no perfect ordinance. We can tweak it here, and we can tweak it there, but we're going to move forward, and we're going to do so with the best interest of our city in mind, and, and hopefully, we've heard, well, we have. We've heard two years of, of input, and I appreciate it. The fact that some of you have been here every meeting that we've talked about this tells me how passionate you are, the developers. And I've said this before too, I don't think developers want to knock down all the trees and make it all barren and desert-like. They want to sell houses. You sell houses with pretty trees. So I appreciate that. With that, Member Jordan, you're always first. You are.
I am.
All right, go ahead.
Well, I, I of course want to make a motion, but I need to understand something. I'm sure council wants to say something, but I like to make the motion. But I need to understand, when I suggested that we do, to make sure we grandfathered in the development agreement, whatever the motion is, is inclusive of that. Secondly, I think we need to have a discussion about the burning that Sarah is talking about, and, you know, I love the way these guys talk. I just love the way you all talk. I could listen to you forever, to be honest with you. They're pretty intelligent, and they know what they're talking about. I was convinced about burning when he, you started talking, but then, who was it? You just got up and started talking, and I know, working at the Space Center for many, many years, we always had controlled burns. And you're going to be affected. The air is just going to be affected. And I know, as a business owner, there's a lot of requirements that we have to deal with. It is, of course, cheaper to burn on-site than to mulch and then send it away. I know Lockheed Martin is doing that right now across the street from me. They actually mowed all the trees that they did, and they're moving away. I'm not going to say Lockheed Martin has the limited money, but they got a lot of money for sure. But normal developers, you know, their budgets usually are pretty tight, and if you put a requirement on, as any developer, smart developer is going to do, they're going to charge their customer more money in order to, to take care of that. So I'm in a little quandary about that. If I was developing something, I want to go the cheapest way as far as getting rid of debris that I want. So I'd like to have a discussion about that for sure. I can live with burning on-site. I can also think I can be convinced the other way, but I, I'm really not sure about that. And then the second thing, the single-family thing, I'm hard up on this, on the single-family versus the townhomes and the commercial slash industrial, and I'm hard up on that because it is different. Even though there are people who are living in this facility, the challenge you have with that, it is commercial because you're talking about driveway, driver, you're talking about parking lots, you're talking about dumpsters, you're talking about a lot of stuff that you don't have in a normal, single-family development. So to me, that's more commercial than it is. And a lot of times, these things are rented out for a while, and then they, they go away. And then the third thing, I think, I can't remember what you said. You had three things.
That was it. The grandfathering was the third one.
So with that, that's where I am. I like to make a motion, but I want to hear. Yeah, I'm going to hold on there.
And we'll move over to more discussion, and that will take me to Vice Mayor Nelson.
Well, I'm with Sarah on the burning and the residential because, to me, having lived in a townhouse, which I have to admit, my father developed, I could have used a couple more trees, to be honest with you, and he, he was fairly good about it. But it would have been nice to have that area. I had small kids. It would have been great. So I think the canopy should extend to all residential development because that's just part of, to me, part of life.
Hold that thought, hold that thought for a second. Just to clarify, where are we at now with the residential versus single-family house?
The September version says that we will only require canopy for sub, single-family subdivisions.
Okay.
And the prior version said residential.
Correct.
Right.
Go ahead.
So, and then my, my third question really is the suggestion of Mr. Moya, what does that do, yeah, to our ordinance?
Well, I don't have Mr. Moya's paperwork in front of me. I was neglectful and left it on my desk, but.
Would you like a copy?
That would be delightful. Thank you. I can tell you this. Right now, the trees that have to be planted as part of mitigate, mitigation for replacement are required to be one-inch caliper, very much. If you are planting a tree for landscaping, it's requi, if it's an overstory tree, it's required to be a three-inch caliper, and if it is a coniferous tree, it's required to be a two-and-a-half-inch caliper. So on page eight, which is page 268 of your agenda package, under section 33A, the change has been made to say that if you're going to remove or replace a tree, you must meet the minimum specifications. So we have increased this to require the three-inch and the two-inch caliper, which means that these trees will now meet the minimum requirement for the landscaping. And if that's what Mr. Moya was just, was trying to intent, intending, then I guess I've proven I'm clever twice in a row. But if it is not, then it'll take me a minute to look at this.
Well, I think you're saying four-inch caliper, caliper. Yeah.
Yes. Then 100% of the tree caliper shall be el, ah. Well, council could certainly say that, that you could do that. Absolutely, that's a possibility. And I would like to mention one other thing because I need to make sure everybody understands what they're voting on. Currently, no one is required to mitigate anything between 14 and 20 inches. The current language in this code would require commercial and industrial to mitigate between 14 and 20 inches at a standard of one inch of tree lost, half-inch mitigation, so at a 50% standard. So when there are people who stand, stood up tonight and said that the current ordinance would not impact commercial industrial at all, that is not true when it came to the mitigation of trees between 14 and 20 inches. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. But this standard to say that if the trees are four inches or larger for mitigation credits, we could certainly add that in. As I said, we have a very robust current mitigation standard.
I think I like the idea of having some trees that are a little bit larger. I think it would be a great idea.
And, right, and that's why the staff had this change from the one-inch caliper to the three-inch caliper, but this mitigation could certainly be added. As I said, we're, we have a significant mitigation standard right now.
So that's sort of where I'm at.
Could we give the developer the option on Mr. Moya's thought we could stay with? Could we give the developer the option on Mr. Moya's thought? We could stay with the smaller tree, but if you wanted to, you could go to the bigger tree?
Sure. Yes, absolutely. And I think that was his intent.
Okay.
It says if trees four inches are larger, then those would be for mitigation. So we could certainly do that.
That just sounds practical to me. Member Stokel?
Yep. I'm kind of still where I was at prior. I think when we were looking at those maps, too, when discussing commercial, industrial, residential, I'm not really comfortable with going to single-family now without seeing how that impacts. I was, I was comfortable leaving industrial and commercial out of it in regards to the canopy. I still kind of am for residential in that. The burning, I think, I'm, trust me, I'm not a scientist at all, but I think there's a difference between a controlled burn and then burning on-site. So I don't, yeah, I, I'd still kinda, I don't think we should do the burning on-site. And then definitely the grandfathering in. So that's kind of where I'm at.
What's the difference between a controlled burn and burning on-site? Come on up, if you would. I'm allowed to do that.
So, controlled burn, my definition is, are you...
There you go. I think they got it. They got it. Well, what I'm really looking for, so you don't go into my other 20-minute biology class, is, is what's the outcome difference? You talked about the spores and et cetera, et cetera, from the burn of development. Do you not get the same thing in a controlled burn on the Space Center?
Yes, you do.
That was a quick answer.
Excuse me, I disagree.
Say again?
I said I disagree. Florida is a, most of Florida, the pines especially, is a fire climax community. That means that the, the trees don't, those pine cones don't even germinate until fire has been through them. So the average in Florida is that the, Florida burned about once every seven years before man decided that Smokey the Bear was our hero, and we weren't gonna burn anything. So the reason that we have these burns is because what we're burning is the smaller bushes, and we are sending fire quickly through a pine forest, for instance, so that we maintain the fire, we reduce the fire load, and we allow those pine cones to germinate. You may remember in the fires of 1998, how it was, there was so much underbrush that the trees actually died from the fire. So what we do now is we put these, if you'll notice, they do these controlled burns on windy days, generally, so that the fire moves quickly through the development, does not completely destroy the tree, but does allow the underbrush. So I think that what you're seeing in a controlled burn is not as much tree being burned as you would if you put the trees and the, the tritus, well, the bushes, and burn the entire thing. And perhaps that's what this gentleman was trying to say, but that's my understanding of how a controlled burn works versus burning everything that would be amassed on that site.
So back to you real quick, and, and you could speak in my biology class, too, clearly. But a controlled burn, and I get that, I've seen some of those in my area, so, so that's exactly how it goes. They burn the bottom, and they don't kill the tree. But are, do you feel that it's as detrimental in a, in a burn at a project as it is for a controlled burn? Same stuff going in the air?
I wasn't aware the question was whether it's detrimental or not, as opposed to the release of fungal spores. Whether it's controlled or not, you are gonna release, according to the ongoing research at the moment, fungal spores that live in trees. They do not get burned up. They, they are transferred out on smoke. Now, the benefits, obviously, of reseeding the conifer or pine family, pinus is, that's how they receive. But research now is showing for the first time that fungal spores do not incinerate. They transfer in the smoke, and fungal spores are part, and viral spores are part of the tree.
So burning at a project site is basically, I don't know if we caught many, but a smaller version of a controlled burn?
By emitting smoke from something that contains fungal or viral spores has the same effect. It's just how much of it you do. So if you've got a, if you've got a small area, you're not really gonna emit enough to make a significant problem. But once you've got a much larger burn, then you've got more fungal spores in the air.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Students on the front row, this is, I haven't figured this out yet. Okay, I can't remember.
Oh, I just wanted to follow up, finish. Also, did wanna include Mr. Moya's, his suggestion with this four-inch as well. And then, again, I don't know much about the tree burning as well, but I feel like there are benefits. They have to do controlled burns sometimes. So even though it may not be the best, I think that does have to happen. The good outweighs the bad. When you're burning on a development, I think there's other, there's other ways that they can do it. I don't think it's needed, and I don't think the benefit would outweigh the cost in that scenario.
Member Robinson?
Yeah, did we decide, Peggy, that Mr. Moya's suggestion and the president's suggestion was both gonna stay in there?
Well, I think you're telling me, but I, I think that it is certainly a doable. I don't think that it completely ruins the ordinance by making that increase.
And I, I think that what he suggested is, is a good thing, but I also think what's in there is a good thing as well.
Okay, well, what, what we would do is that we, we have increased the minimum planting from one inch to three inch, and then the suggestion was made that if it goes to four inches or above, that the additional mitigation credit would be given.
All right. Thank you.
And I believe that.
And also, I don't, I don't think that what the burning concern from Member Nelson and Member Starkle was about the, the natural benefit of the burning. It was about the smoke that it creates from, for the lungs. That's, I think that that, that they did not say that it wasn't a nature benefit by doing that. It's that the smoke that gets in the air with people with COPD and having other respiratory concerns will be affected. I think that's where they were coming from on that. And I may be incorrect, but I did think that was...
Well, not to keep going back, but if that's what your concern is, a controlled burn's the same thing. Because I, let me, stop, stop. Let me just say, they do a controlled burn behind my house, and I couldn't keep it out of the house. So if you're concerned about the breathing that you're doing, a controlled burn's real bad if it's behind your house. And so I don't see the difference between the two in that aspect. We may have some difference with spores, and we may have some difference with other things, but if you stand in the middle of a controlled burn, you're not gonna breathe very well. And if you stand in the middle of a, a project burn, you're not gonna breathe very well. So unless you guys are saying something different, I don't see the difference. Member Vice Mayor.
I think the difference is, when you have a controlled burn, it's supposed to be for a short duration of time. It's supposed to go through and burn the brush out, burn the pine cones, and be done. Whereas when you have all of the vegetation from a development stacked up, and I've seen it happen, I saw it happen on Royal Oak, I saw it happen out at Sherwood, is these huge piles that burn forever. I mean, we're talking like days on end.
And except for the one we had recently, I really haven't seen very many. So I'm, I'm really asking questions, 'cause I don't know, I just don't know.
Dad was land developer. He developed Royal Oak.
Okay.
He developed Sherwood. I was probably nine when he did Royal Oak. I probably should say I was like two, but anyway. They piled up the brush, and it, and they've done it out the far, in the pastures. They piled out the everything, and it burns for days. So, yeah, we would have to go out and check and make sure that, you know, the wind didn't come up, and we weren't burning our pasture down or whatever, but it's, it's a long period of time. So to me, that's the difference.
Then that's the difference. Well, we'll go back to Member Jordan. He may still be wanting to make a motion.
Well, I do wanna make a motion, but I still have, Peggy, kinda, you got me when you say something. And that was about the 14-inch trees. Explain that again, 'cause I think you're saying before versus after, and I need to understand if we're putting more requirements on industry.
Currently, there is no mitigation for any tree less than 20 inches.
Currently?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The ordinance, the September ordinance, which is the one I've been referring to, would require mitigation from 14 to 20 inches for commercial and industrial, even though the canopy requirements would be optional, because those have been changed.
Okay. Well, first of all, I, I cannot agree to that. The whole idea in the beginning, if you all remember, was we were just talking about single-family homes, and now we're going into industrial. So my motion is not gonna include us adding more requirements on the industrial side, when we didn't have it in the first place, number one. Second one, you really need to be careful about the single-family versus the multifamily, because I believe you can justify saying why you have a separation between single and multifamily and, and industrial and commercial. Industrial and commercial and multifamily, in my opinion, are more commercial, and if anyone pushes back, you can justify why that is. If you add that to it, I think you're probably gonna have a problem with someone coming and saying, why is that not a commercial facility that I'm building, and you're making me do something that a single-family is a requirement, but a, a commercial building is not. So this is about probability of someone who wants to build a multifamily facility that has parking lots and everything else that a commercial facility have. And what you're just asking, if I'm hearing both of you all right, you want the multifamily to be in with the single-family, which they are two different animals, totally two different animals. It's, multifamily is more of on the commercial side. It is not a single-family development. So we need to think about that. And there was one, I think the Moya thing is, is fine. I think that's, that's a smart thing for us to do.
Go on now.
First one.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
And then, of course, the, the burning thing. I'm, I'm right back where, Peggy, explain to me, I thought there was, you, if we left it the way it is now, where you couldn't do a burn, isn't there some type of way you could request the burn on-site right now?
There isn't, there, the current code has an incentive, if you choose to not burn, you actually get a reduction in the per-inch mitigation, rather than it being $100, it's down to 75. The current ordinance, the proposed ordinance, says that if you choose not to burn on-site, that the mitigation requirements would be reduced by 25%, which if, and the reason that's been changed a little bit is because if you put canopy on your site, you're already getting a reduction in your mitigation requirements. So not burning would reduce that further. For those that are industrial and commercial, and depending on what happens with residential, those that have canopy optional development are being required to have the 100-inch mitigate, $100 an inch mitigation, so that 25% is back down to the 75, which is currently here. So that's, there is a, an incentive for not burning.
There is an incentive for not burning, even on the new ordinance?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. All right. If, if I were to make a motion, which I'm about to do, if I said, move to approve the ordinance number 20-2021, based on staff's requirement and the changes that we made up here, which was...
The Moya. I don't know what you say about that.
The Moya, number one. And number two, of course, was the grandfathering in.
Grandfathering.
Right.
All-in.
All-in.
And you need to include the rat sheet.
Right. Those, those changes are, are actually pretty minor. What we have done is clarified that the certified nursery professional, we've explained what that is. We have clarified that uplands are considered as preservation. We have clarified that the category, one time in this code, but we need to put it in twice, that it, the invasive should be category one, which I believe a speaker mentioned. And the fourth is, where is that? Then there's a fourth change, that, oh, here it is. That is, no, that's not it. Yes, my rat sheet. Oh, thank you. It's a good thing he's here for me. Thank you. And then, instead of, and this is for incentives in 3034K, rather than say, it, just to clarify it for the incentive, we wrote, development described in section 3031, choosing to meet optional canopy requirements. So these are all clarifications that hopefully don't change the intent of anything, but do clarify further. Thank you. I know I've got it in here somewhere.
And that's my motion.
Could I, could I please clarify one point?
Oh, do you have to?
Yeah, yes.
Go ahead, City Attorney.
On the grandfathering, I thought I heard all-in, and I'm not sure what that meant.
I mean, and to me...
Develop, because I think we added, there was a question about adding developer agreements.
Yes.
I just wanna be clear on, if we're amending the current ordinance for grandfathering, what exactly are we adding? I just wanna make sure.
What do you say about grandfathering right now?
Well, this is, what we say right now is that if you, and if you have a final plat approval, site plan approval, sketch plan, plat, and preliminary plat approval, which remains valid.
Right.
Development on file, a completed application for all of those, and those which have building permits at the effective date of this ordinance. What I heard was that in B, C, and...
D.
Yeah, I don't know why we need it in D, but if that makes you happy. B, C, because D says, the city may recognize other applications for vested rights, consistent with chapter 34.
Yeah, the, the reason why I added it with D is because it has the same words as the other, as far as the plat and, and other stuff in there.
Oh, okay.
Approved our site plan and, and all that stuff, so...
Not anymore. I just read D to you.
Oh, okay.
The city may recognize other applications for vested rights. What we, what we did about two ordnance ago was we consolidated B and C, I think. So in, in B and C, we would add the language, approved and recorded development.
Previous approved.
If you wanna say previously approved.
Approved and recorded development.
Previously approved.
Approved and recorded development agreements, right.
Yes, I have that. And that's what we would add to B and C.
Okay. Because clearly, I think what, I know what I've said in, in our meetings, too, is that if somebody's already started, and they've got a project going, I don't want it to change halfway through their project. And if they are previously stated and started, they're grandfathered. So all-in basically means if they got started, they're grandfathered. And the way she's described, got started, is what we'd be looking at. Agree, Member Jordan?
I, I agree. One other thing, I really don't like that 14 to 16 inches. If we can get that out of there.
Wanda, now's the time to pass out that stuff I just brought you.
On command.
What is going on here?
I had, I had anticipated that this issue may come up, and this is language that would address that issue if council so chooses. And what it does is it says that developments that do not meet the canopy and the required mitigation is two to one, will only have to mitigate specimen and heritage trees, which are trees from 20 inches and above.
Okay.
So the language that is shown, highlighted in this section, says nine of 16, a number So the language that is shown highlighted in this section says nine of 16, a number, paragraph two, would basically result in no change to the mitigation requirements for any development which does not have to meet canopy.
Okay, that's what I want. That's my motion.
Do it again.
Are you serious?
Me too, I can repeat it.
Yeah, will you repeat it, please?
Of course I can. The grandfathering will include previously approved and recorded development agreements in number 13B and C. The errata sheet includes the Florida Nursery Growers and Landscaping Association designation. The, in section 3034, the use of the word upland as a clarification, a clarification development described in 3031.5, choosing to meet optional canopy requirements as part of the incentive, and a clarification that can, that it's category one Florida Exotic Pest Plant Council, which is, has a list of nuisance trees. That's already in one part of the ordinance and was not duplicated in the other. That burning would be permitted, as it is in the code right now. The suggestion by Mr. Moya and the home builders about the four inches, trees or larger, would receive, be eligible for mitigation credits, and that's all I've heard.
And there are incentive, incentives not to burn.
Correct, and those are in there currently.
That's what we want.
That's right, so there would be no changes to those, that 25%.
That's a pretty good incentive. I like that.
We're good?
I, I'm good with everything I just heard.
I'm good with it. I, I think that the bone of contention, I believe, is probably the single versus the multi, but I'm telling you, we can justify that. In my opinion, we can justify with anyone.
No, see, it's, we started out with all residential development, and now we're sitting here saying only single-family residential development. And to me, that's the bone of contention, because I see not apartments, but townhomes where I own the home.
Right.
And therefore, I want to see some type of canopy over that, canopy trees, more trees.
I have a suggestion, if all you care about is townhomes.
Okay, tell me.
If townhomes are actually in subdivisions, so if we took the word "single family" out and said residential subdivisions, that would include townhomes. It would not include multifamily, but it would include the single-family townhome.
That's a good compromise.
I would like that.
That's a good compromise.
All right.
Okay.
Go, do that.
Yeah. Move for the question, sir, let's vote.
Um, City Attorney, no?
I want to clarify, we have a motion, I didn't know if we had a second.
No, I'm, I'm still trying to make sure I know what the motion is.
Oh, I...
All right. We did not have a second yet, no, we hadn't gotten that...
Well, let me see, I'm not totally happy, but...
Say it, say it.
I might have to think about it for a while.
Come on.
Come on.
There, please.
Second.
Thank you.
So is it clear, Mr. Jordan, your motion's been modified to include the latest revision, and that's what the second is based upon?
Yes.
I think that we, we find it just enough. We have Member Jordan with a motion, we have Vice Mayor with the second. And as we move forward, I would say again, I think that the efforts that have been made over the last two years actually have exceeded what we started with. Uh, we were really looking to just have some low picking fruit and some wins, just to get some, you know, we all love trees. And we wanted to get something going there, and then over the last two years, it's become a little bit more than that. So with that, I, I want to thank all the efforts that were done over with you, with the PNZ, the TEC, and all the developers who have gotten together with staff and all the tree team. So, because the tree team is not necessarily on a committee, but the tree team has had a lot to do with moving this forward. So with that, we have the motion and the second, roll call, vote.
Discussion.
I'm sorry, I already...
My only, I think this is a good compromise, my only other, to see if we can compromise on not allowing the onsite burning. We have incentives, but, yes, I would like to see us not have it if we're open. She did second.
This is discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah.
You can...
Can I respond to what she's saying?
Um, yes, go ahead.
All right, the, you know, I don't see why that would make a big difference to you, because we're basically saying that we'd rather for you not to do it, but there is a way that you can do it if you must do it, because it costs money. You know, the bottom line to me, it just costs a lot of money, and I think it's a good compromise, because it does give them an incentive to not do it. They're not going to do it if they have another way of doing it, for sure.
I am happy, I, yes, if I don't have a majority that won't allow it, I'm happy with the incentive, I just wanted to throw that out there one more time.
Thank you so much.
But I am happy that we are able to compromise on some of this.
Um, Vice Mayor?
Can I say I'm happy that we compromised? But I understand Sarah's point of view.
I understand.
And that for people who have respiratory illnesses, this is, this is hardship, you know? And even for our mayor, who doesn't have respiratory illnesses, me, it's, it's pretty rough.
I totally agree, and I hope that the incentives will be significant to get that done, because I was really not aware that they went for days and days. I mean, we get those muck fires out there in the St. Johns. But that being said, before we vote, I would say once again that this has been a good compromise. And certainly sometimes, a compromise is a great thing until you don't see it your way. But I think we have people out here who have worked hard and are glad to see us move forward with something. I think the developers, again, once, again, when I meet with developers, they don't want to have, sell areas without trees. And they don't sell, well, maybe they do sell at this day and age, but they sell better if you've got trees. So with that said, roll call, vote.
Oh, my God.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Tree ordinance passes unanimously. With that, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Oh, my God.
Oh, thank you.
Back to order recess is over. City manager, please introduce new business.
Yes, sir. We're first off, we have no first ordinance reading, no old business, and we're to new business. And the first is the fiscal year FY 2021 budgetary carry forward. Annual budget appropriations lapse at the end of each fiscal year except for the unexpendated appropriations on open grant programs, reserve accounts, and capital projects. Incumbrances, contracts, and other commitments outstanding at the year end are canceled and re-appropriated in the succeeding year's budget. Accordingly, the material encumbrances, contracts, and other commitments, the corresponding appropriations are also carried forward into the new year to fund the encumbrances, contracts, and commitments. FY 21 carry forward list is consists of mostly entirely vehicles and machinery that have been ordered and purchase orders and have been processed, but they have not been delivered. Due to several factors such as COVID, supply chain distributions, and worldwide chip shortages, nearly all the vehicles and machinery are experiencing significant backlogs in excess of eight to 10 months in many instances. And I'll use an example of a fire engine that we normally order takes about eight months. The current one we're working on will be at least 18 months. So the carry forward list is something we do budgetarily wise. This is a large one, but it mostly is vehicles and machinery.
All right. Well, thank you. Counsel, any comments at this time? Cards, please.
One card. Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty points at Avenue. And I'm speaking on this matter. I've read through the agenda packet. And I'm not sure what I can say and what can happen. But during the little recess we had, I spoke to police, two police officers. I spoke to the city clerk, and I spoke to Mayor Diesel regarding what just happened here. And what it appears to me is my appearance is that, is that as I was speaking, and I was maybe, let's say, not, let's say, talking all about trees, but also talking about what, defending myself about what someone said at the last meeting after I had spoken, and then he took off. But in this case is that I was interrupted from behind by a threat from a police officer who I believe was out of order because I believe this is not in accordance with Robert's rules of order. In other words, I believe that that Mayor Diesel has full control of this building, and a police officer doesn't have a right to come in here and make threats to me, and that's exactly what happened. In fact, is in our discussion with that police officer, he talked to me about what I was doing with slander. And slander is something he's accused of.
Stop, stop, stop the clock, stop the clock. I'm not sure where you're going with all this. You mentioned something to me, certainly I'm back in the meeting now, so there's, I've not moved forward in any way, shape, or form, so I kind of like us to stay away from all that. If you want to talk about this, I'd love to hear you say it. But I get where you're coming from. I got you.
I'm just wondering whether, you know, I'm gonna have another police officer coming here and dragging me out.
You're standing up to talk about the budgetary carry forward. And if you'll do that for the next minute and a half, we'd be really good. So let's go.
All right, okay. All right. Here's what I'm reading to you, is that from this agenda packet, it says that that this is to fulfill the strategic objective to maintain financial stability, blah, 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 so forth like that. Okay? Now, on number sixteen that I have mailed, sent to you by email today, and if so, hopefully that I won't be interrupted by a police officer in this case, is that I'm going to, I'm going to read to you what I sent to you. And it says, "City claims that fifty percent of the general budget revenue," and this was just recently at a meeting, "fifty percent of the general budget budget revenue is spent on public safety." That's not on taking people off the podium by the police officers. If so, why can't or didn't our city turn off the fountains that sprayed cars and people with urine? I'm reading this. Urine, feces, and bloodborne pathogens for four months. And then also I wrote here, why did, why did city use employees not trained and not vaccinated to wear up a sewage? So we're talking about this extra, this particular budget item. And so also, is, is this lack of money? In other words, we have, or is this a case of negligence, a cover up of guilt, confusion, apathy? So in other words, you've got money to spend. You're seeing how you're spending your money instead of stopping the sewage. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Anything from the council? Okay, Member Jordan.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I move that we approve the fiscal year 2021 budgetary carry forward list.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan, a second from Vice Mayor. Roll call vote.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yeah. Twelve A passes unanimously.
Onto twelve B, and the city attorney will read the procedures for quasi judicial.
Yes, sir. And before I do that, I just wanted counsel to know, I received a request from a citizen regarding settlement of a judgment that wasn't received in time to include on your agenda. But I'd like to include that under my report, so I'd like you to add that to the agenda, and anyone here that would know that's going to be added under my report is discussion of a settlement of a judgment.
Motion to add that to the agenda. I have a so moved from Member Jordan, a second from Vice Mayor. All in favor, say yes. Yes. Opposed? Approved.
Okay, we'll do it that under my report. At this time, I'd like to read the quasi judicial rules applicable to the final plat for Fox Lake Hammock.
Thank you.
During that portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on this quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council, signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Of all witnesses that intend to speak, sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, full truth, and nothing but the truth. If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on this quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted any investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visitor opinion shall be disclosed. If written ex parte communications exist, verify that the applicant has received them. So if we do have that, we'll verify the applicant has received any ex parte communications and an opportunity to review them and is ready to proceed.
Okay.
And with that, sir, I'll introduce Fox Hammock final plat approval. Fox Hammock is a sixty-one unit, single-family subdivision located on approximately forty-seven point three acres of land zoned planned development in a multi-family, medium-density R2 residential. The planned development rezoning and master plan was approved by city council on November twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen. The followings are attachments that are required for your approval. The final plat, and Peggy has the Mylar right there, the covenants, performance bonds required for infrastructure and sidewalks. Staff has reviewed the final plat for consistency with the comprehensive plan and land development regulations and recommends approval. Staff has also reviewed the covenants and performance bonds and recommends acceptance. Ms. Busaka will provide her first testimony.
You got anything there, Ms. Busaka?
Very quick, I wanted to confirm that the ma, the final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat as required by section thirty-seven, one seventy-one. The concurrency evaluation has been received and reviewed. And although the project is not expected to cause a deficiency in public services or facilities, no building permit will be issued without a concurrency evaluation. The final plat has been reviewed by staff and found to be consistent with chapter twenty-eight zoning, chapter twenty-nine special districts and overlays, chapter thirty development standards, chapter thirty-three planned development, chapter thirty-four subdivisions, technical manual, section seven and nine, and the water resources technical specifications. This information is in your package on page three thirty-nine, three forty, and three forty-one. The Fox Hammock project is consistent with future land use objective one point nineteen planned development. And the, based on the staff review and the analysis provided to you, the staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any, Member Robinson?
No, my language is left.
Okay, no worries. Any other counsel for questions? I see none. Applicant. Guys, come on up. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. Mayor. Council members, Clark Sprinkle with Surrey Homes, two hundred East New England Avenue, number one ten Winter Park, Florida. Here on behalf of Surrey Homes, I just wanted to say that we support staff's decision and recommendation of approval. They've been fantastic to work with throughout the process, and we're really looking forward to moving forward and starting to sell some homes at Fox Hammock. Here to answer any questions you may have, our engineer is here as well. Any technical questions, I might refer to him, but any questions you may have, certainly happy to, to address them.
What do you think about trees?
I tell you what, I love trees. I love trees.
I'll be honest with you, I feel very good about the, the project and the plats, and everything seems to be in order. Ms. Busaka and staff recommend approval. I feel really good about it. Counsel, anything?
Mayor, I could say, I was just relieved that they were here for trees and not for our plat.
We've had that too.
Yes.
So at this point, I guess we're good with you, and we may call you back up if need be.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we've had the applicant. We call cards.
We have one card. Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston. I'm an engineer, and it looks like to me Mr. Honeycutt's done a fine job on this project. And he's done many good jobs on projects. I'm, I'm here not to oppose it or give approval for it, but I'm here for the issue of neither. And I'm also giving you a warning. Now, I want to understand, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Now, I don't, hopefully I won't have any police officer from behind threatening me tonight or telling me that I've been slandering. So anyhow, so what I have, the question is on this particular project is addressed by number eight that I have sent to you, and I want this also to go. Ms. Wanda, this will also go with this project. Just hand out. So number eight reads as follows. It has to do with city's policy to ignore laws and to force future flooding. This is a big issue. It says, "By no maintenance of floodways located outside of city limits as required by one." This is a violation of laws. I hope Mr. The attorney is paying attention to it because he's the one that's doing it. Stormwater master plan of greater Tyresville, number two, FEMA requirements to preserve flood zones, number three, common sense and logic that water flows downhill. City conceals facts from the public, state FDIP, FEMA, and others such as in city's deliberately false two thousand nineteen report, resilient Titusville, co-authored by Brad Parish, Eddie Galindo, ECF RPC, et cetera, that part of city is, and because the city is susceptible to flooding by the outrageous ignorance and arrogance of council and staff hiding the facts of unmaintained floodways to the Saint John's River located between Fox Lake Road and State Road fifty, ORB eight one fifty-six, eighty-one forty-six, page nine ninety-eight. Now, please pay special attention to what's going on here. Is that I'm not saying that this project is going to be flooded, but downstream are those areas. And what's going on is, is that although we can say that this has a legal positive outfall, it's going to be variable. It's variable because what's going to happen? What's going to happen with the undergrowth? What's going to happen? Because you're not maintaining it. You're breaking the law by following Mr. Mr. Broome. He's not, he's supposed to be following the laws. The laws is that you're supposed to follow the stormwater management plan. You're not doing it. This is a big deal. So when we get into suit and when something happens, when the big storm happens, all of you guys are hopefully going to get sued. That's what's going to happen. Has to do with this project.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Two more minutes.
I see none. Thank you. All right. Counsel, any, I look, I know what you're getting ready to do. Counsel, anything? No questions? Don't need the applicant back up? Okay, Member Jordan.
He's entitled to rebuttal if he, if you want.
Tell me again?
Oh, so the applicant can have rebuttal if he'd like to.
That's what I just said. I got to keep my microphone out, or I said applicant, anything? Don't see him. All right, go ahead. If you want to say something, but it sounds to me like you're going to be pretty happy. Don't say anything just because he told you to.
We're fine, Mayor, and council members, we're okay.
Thank you. He just did that because he said something. No, thank you very much. Obviously, what we said earlier stands now. Everything looks to be in order, and it looks like it's going to be a very positive addition. So thank you so much for being in Titusville. Member Jordan.
All right. Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we approve the final plat and covenants for Fox Lake Hammock and accept the performance bonds for completion required infrastructure and sidewalks.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Jordan, a second from Member Stokoe. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Nelson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you guys very much for being in Titusville, and always thank you.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Before Ms. Busaka runs away out the door.
Go ahead.
Can I, can I ask, when we were talking about the tree ordinance, sorry, guys, don't worry. Run, run. I asked about advisability of looking on the trees in the commercial parking lots, the soil, and advisability of looking at trees within the boulevard and the front yards of homes and the single-family residence. And I didn't know if everybody else was in agreement. That just became part of this, but I'd rather like to see us look at that. And I just wanted to make sure that we had it clearly before Ms. Busaka ran away. We're good. Okay. All right. It, it won't be anytime soon.
I'm not looking for you anytime soon.
Thank you. Next month? You can throw it now, you don't have to. Just at some point.
I, I've got to say this before you go, and I mean this in all sincerity. You have been a jewel through this whole thing.
Yeah.
You, you have, you even had a quick wit about you, and you, you made it fun. If it can call this fun for us to go through something like this. But I don't believe we could have gotten to the point we got to if it wasn't for you. So I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, but this has definitely been an effort from so many people. And so it is, I'm just the face of all of the many hours from the citizens that really, and this other staff that really put this together. So I will pass on your thanks to them.
I hope that, and I think we all have, but I hope we've all said that a lot. I think I've said at least four times tonight. And every time I say, and thanks, Ms. Busaka, I always add, and your team, because I know that's what you're getting ready to say when I say that. And last but not least, I, I hope that you understand my frustrations yesterday in our meeting when I actually looked like a coach, I got a bad call. So, and when I left, I thought about that. I said, ah, she understands. She goes through this every day.
There was no penalty flag thrown.
Now they tell me.
Yes. Actually, I, I completely understood and felt just pretty much the same at that moment, so we're all in this together.
But I did think, I want you to know, I did have a moment of reflection. Thank you very much. Thank you for everything.
Of course, my pleasure.
Appreciate that. Okay. I have no idea where we're at.
Next item, sir, is item thirteen petitions and requests from the public present non-agen items.
And we have none.
Onto the mayor and council reports.
Counsel, hit your button if you have something you would like to share. What's wrong? We have no petition. There's nobody left. Yeah? Yeah, you only speak once, yeah. No, you're really confusing me. I'm looking at you. I'm looking out there. I said, I'm not, I'm really not seeing anybody, and Stan already had one, so that's it. All right. So then we move to, if you guys have anything, it's going on ten. If you don't, that's okay. He pulled the plug. No? I'm going to go no as well. We're, we're a clean sweep. We're out of here. City manager.
Okay, I do have one action item. The legislative priorities are listed that we've recommended for you, and we're asking you to review and adjust as necessary and/or affirm our recommendations.
And that means now? That means we got more work to do. No, there's, there's really not anything to that. I've already seen it. I'm, I'm good with it. Can I have a motion?
Well, are there, are there cards?
Richard.
Okay. Okay. You can't have a card. We didn't even know we were doing this, didn't we? Do you have a card? But I believe you. Come on up. This is particular, this is our forty-three second card. I don't think there are.
And I have a.
Are you ready to vote? He's got to be able to talk.
So you can start the time.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. All right. Well, this is a surprise to me that this particular issue is going to be voted on without very much information along that. But so, so I wish it had been notified in the agenda packet that, that it's going to be. Because, you know, there's a number of things that have been happening. And if you remember, at one time is that, right at the end of a meeting, is that
And if you remember, at one time is that, right at the end of a meeting, is that someone, the Mayor Johnson was trying to pull rule 13, you know, to reverse a decision that was made. And they spent 27 minutes speaking on bankruptcy, city bankruptcy. And I don't think there was anybody in the audience because everybody had already gone. So, so, so I think we should be careful. And indeed, I do have a card on this. So it covered, that covers this, and I would like you to be more careful about that. And I'd like you to also follow Robert's Rules of Orders. And I will be making a complaint, as I told Mr. Lincoln, Lincoln Feld, the officer over here, about what happened. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, I have a motion. I have a motion from Member Jordan.
Second.
And I have a second from Vice Mayor. I'm going to go all in favor. All in favor, say yes. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And last, as we enter this budget year this week, from staff, we appreciate council support going into this. As several of you have mentioned, the uncertainty of future with inflationary pressures. This is a great budget this year, and we're looking forward to to moving the city forward, even though we're going into some uncharted years ahead. So on behalf of staff, we really appreciate council support in this year's budget. And last, I'd like to recognize Officer Willie Taylor over there, who just finished his field training and is now solo. Willie, welcome to the team again. You look great in blue. We're, we're glad that you're part of the team, so appreciate it. And subject to your questions, completes my portion.
It just gives me an opportunity, as most of you know, I coached Willie in high school at Titusville High. And Willie was a running back, and I always tell this story because it's true. If he was running towards this officer, he would run instead, and make, instead of making a cut, like most running backs do, to get away from that player, that officer, he'd run over him. I mean, I kid you not, there was times that head set upstairs, I gosh, you know, the coach upstairs, I gosh, I wish he'd cut away from me. He goes, no, he's going to go into him. And that's how Willie goes into life. And I appreciate you, Willie, and put your head down and never quit. Thank you, brother. Yeah, for real. Thank you, Willie. Outside of that, counsel?
We have the city attorney.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is the item that you previously agreed to add. In 2009, the city had obtained a judgment in case number 2009 SC 006514 related to property damage against Mr. Johnson. He had damaged a Pulte's vehicle. We we got a judgment for that damage in the amount of $2,553.51. And it's been accruing interest since 2009, so that has accrued to about $5,000. I received a letter from Mr. Johnson recognizing that this judgment was there, and he would like to take care of it. And he's proposed to settle that in the amount of $3,000, which I support. And I think it is a good settlement if, and I throw that to council. He's asked you to consider that as well.
Vice Mayor?
I think that's probably a fair offer. Would be mine is some interest, but trying to collect burden hand is better than none.
So I'm looking at it as a motion?
We have one card. Stan Johnston.
You did not give us one time where you said, I'll just pass.
Stan Johnston, 860 Point Set Avenue, and I do have a card on this. And hopefully that the police will not, oh, he's going to be unplugged. Okay, so he was, Mr. Broom was talking about Mr. Johnson. That's not Johnston. That's not me. That's what I'm going to clarify that. That's the main thing I want to do is, that's not me this time.
Not you.
Not this time.
And it's, and it's not the former mayor.
I made that clear, so I'll let you all go on that, and thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, so now I have.
God bless you.
Thank you.
So that would be a motion.
I have the motion from Vice Mayor. I have a second from Member Jordan. All those in favor, say yes. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is that it? With that, thank you. It was a great meeting. I appreciate the hard work, and we got there. Could have been two weeks ago, but we got there.